Cheryl, did you do offices as well, TDC? Oh, I said TDC and that one, but that's fine. I can pull it up on my iPad. It's all good.
I do it from the roadside. A piece of gum and the garlic. Just gonna try to quickly chew it to clean my teeth and spit it out before we start. I grabbed like a one bite of your garlic fat.
Let me just grab this thing right here. I forgot to restart it.
So, yeah, I go to this and then I go to meeting overview because it can, you can click through to whatever you need. Yeah, so all of these should be clickable and then you'll click over to meeting files and you have to go back up to meeting overview and it's just an easy way to navigate.
I'm just, I'm just getting my papers straight and then I'm, I'm on it. All right, you got, Ruthie, you ready? Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to order. Today is May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. It's one thirty PM and we're running half an hour late. Sorry, we started at nine and still didn't get done on time. And as I said earlier, you don't want hangry commissioners. They were stomach growling up here, so thank you for your patience. Let's see, we have Pastor Danny Slater from First Christian Church of Inverness to lead us in an invocation. And then we have Frank Scarlata. Frank, I remember you. Army veteran, retired SFC, twenty-four year career as a paratrooper, seven combat deployments, and spent nineteen years in special ops, currently attending with La Cucchi Tech, the IATC course, and teaches Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu, which means you're unofficial bad you-know-what. Awesome. All right, so Pastor Slater, if you'd like to start off and then we'll roll right into the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd like to stand and join us, please do.
Commissioners, people, yes, thank you for this opportunity, but also I want to use the words out of the scripture to replace my own feeble ones. Out of First Kings, it says here, out of the words of Solomon, his own prayer to the Lord. "And thou, O Lord, my God, you have made your servant king in place of David, my father. Although I am but a little child, I do not know how to go out nor to come in. And your servant is in the midst of your people whom you have chosen, a great people, too many to be numbered or counted for a multitude. Give your servant, therefore, an understanding mind to govern your people, that I may discern between what is good and what is evil. For who is able to govern this great people of yours? Father God, we thank you so much for this opportunity to be in this place today. We celebrate this time of worship to give you praise and honor and glory. Father, we thank you for those who have gone before us, of which we stand on their sweat and their heart and their blood. And we move to the next level or the next time in our, in life. And we give honor to you and let us not forget those who have gone before us to put us in this place today. We thank you and we give you and ask you for wisdom that we can discern what is right and what is wrong. Father, teach us, please, Lord, during this time, then when, when we should wait on you and hold back and not move, when we should advance and conquer, and when we should pray. Father, again, thank you for this time, and we give this to you through our son and Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Rangers, lead the way.
And thank you for your service, Frank. Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
This is a regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners. This fourteenth day of May, two thousand twenty-four. In attendance are Chair Holly Davis, First Vice Chair Rebecca Bays, Second Vice Chair Diana Finnegan, Commissioners Jeff Kennard and Ruthie Schleba, County Administrator Steve Howard and County Attorney Denise A. Diamondline.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, there's an additional item C eight, which is a proclamation for International Beef Month. Also additional information, E seven, just a correction to the recommended action, paragraph A, add execute resolution. That's all I have.
Is this a record for proclamations? Eight?
There's a lot, yes. This could be the record.
Okay.
Madam Chair, motion to approve A for the agenda with the additions.
Second.
Okay, I have a second by Rebecca Bays.
You mean first?
Uh, first, sorry. Apparently the food just hit my brain. For, uh, motion by Commissioner Bays, a second by Commissioner Kennard. He was louder than, uh, Schleba. Is there any comment by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Bays. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, looking for the Cs.
Motion to approve C one through eight. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Schleba. Any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Join me downstairs.
Those representing Family Abduction Awareness Week, if you could please come forward. Whereas it is the policy of the county that preventing family abduction is a priority. Every forty seconds, a child goes missing or is abducted in the United States. Ninety percent of all missing children get taken by their parents or another family member. As we strive to remain vigilant and informed about the dangers that face children within our communities, it is crucial to recognize that family abduction is a serious crime in all fifty states, not only a civil matter. And whereas a family abduction occurs when a child is taken, wrongfully retained, or concealed by a parent or other family member depriving another individual of their right to custody or visitation, even in cases with vague or absent court orders, the legislature decided that contempt of court is not an adequate remedy for family abduction and made criminal two types of conduct involving custody, interference with custody and parental kidnapping. And whereas a family abduction is often an act of frustration with a left behind parent, the legal system, or their own situation in life, it has its distinctive characteristics, including emotional and psychological trauma to the child and left behind family. Law enforcement officers should recognize these events as not, as not harmless offenses where two parents are arguing over who loves the child more, but instead as an insidious form of child abuse. And whereas it is incumbent on law enforcement agencies to maintain written plans which specify actions and procedures for promptly meeting situations of alleged family abduction. Courts have held that law enforcement is responsible for making certain that the child is with the person who has lawful custody and must verify the validity of any court orders. And when an agency fails to identify a need for training and to set policy for which matters which are foreseeable, it creates a threat to public health. It must be emphasized that law enforcement officers must not become involved in matters which are foreseeable. It creates a threat to public health. It must be emphasized that law enforcement officers must not become involved in the merits of a case or the child's preferences. National Missing Children's Day is commemorated on May twenty-fifth to remember missing children and spread the word about family abduction. Now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby proclaim May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, as Family Abduction Awareness Day. As a reminder to strengthen our efforts to reduce the threat of family abduction, reunite the children who are missing with their families, and honor all of those who are working for the cause executed this fourteenth day of May, two thousand twenty-four. Those representing honoring our past, forging our future, Emergency Medical Services EMS Week, if you could please come forward. Whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas Emergency Medical Services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the Emergency Medical Services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-the-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of Emergency Medical Service teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specified training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of Emergency Medical Service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the week of May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, as Emergency Medical Services Week in Citrus County, Florida, and throughout the state. The fiftieth anniversary of EMS Week theme is EMS Week, honoring our past, forging our future. We encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities executed this fourteenth day of May, two thousand twenty-four.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Commissioners, for recognizing EMS Appreciation Week. This is a very important week to show the appreciation for those who provide lifesaving services every day to the citizens and visitors of Citrus County. Over the past year, our EMS team has responded to twenty-five thousand seven hundred and seventy-one emergency medical calls. As we gather here today to celebrate EMS Week, I want to take a moment to honor and appreciate the incredible dedication, bravery, and the hard work of our Emergency Medical Services team. This year's theme, honoring our past and forging our future, reminds us to acknowledge the fundamental work of those who came before us while striving to build and lead the EMS system we envision for the future. This marks fifty years since we began celebrating EMS Week. The EMS system has made enormous strides in pre-hospital medical care, data collection, emergency management, and community-based healthcare to improve patient outcomes. Again, we appreciate everyone's support and thank you.
Those representing Girl Scouts Medal of Honor, Elizabeth Fiore, if you could please come forward. Whereas the Girl Scouts of West Central Florida is an organization dedicated to empowering young girls and instilling values of leadership, courage, and service. And whereas Elizabeth Fiore, a dedicated member of our community and a proud Girl Scout from Troop One Four Two Six One, displayed remarkable courage and quick thinking on June twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three, during a challenging rafting trip on the Colorado River, where she bravely helped save a young boy's life. And whereas Fiore's selfless actions exemplify the highest ideals of the Girl Scout movement, including leadership, preparedness, and service to others, Fiore reflects the highest ideals of the Girl Scout movement and serves as an inspiration to all members. And whereas the Girl Scouts of the USA have bestowed upon Elizabeth Fiore the prestigious Medal of Honor, the highest award recognizing acts of exemptional bravery and heroism. Today, fewer than two hundred Girl Scouts nationwide have earned this Medal of Honor. Now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby acknowledge and commend Elizabeth Fiore for her lifesaving action and exemplary service. We further recognize and celebrate the awarding of the Girl Scouts Medal of Honor to Elizabeth Fiore, a testament to her unwavering commitment to the principles and values of the Girl Scout organization and to the Girl Scouts of West Central Florida, providing, for providing girls with a safe, inclusive, all-girls space where they build girls with the courage, confidence, and character to make the world a better place, executed this fourteenth day of May, two thousand twenty-four.
I'm gonna say thank you so much. Um, this is such a cool experience. It's really cool to be like wearing the medal and obviously be here. It's a very cool experience. I don't really know what else to say, but thank you.
Those representing Memorial Day, a national day of mourning, if you could please come forward. Whereas Memorial Day, a national day of mourning commemorates the men and the women who have died while serving our country. And whereas American Legion Herbert Serber Post Two Twenty-Five of Floral City celebrates with a ceremony each year for the past fifty years as opposed to honor the fallen. Citrus County is home to over sixteen thousand veterans, and whereas on this Memorial Day, Citrus County remembers and honors the ultimate sacrifices made by our men and our women in uniform and honored their memory with gratitude. And now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, let it be known that the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners proclaims on this Memorial Day, May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, we honor our fallen soldiers and memorialize the veterans who have made the ultimate sacrifice for their country, executed this fourteenth day of May, two thousand twenty-four.
It's very important for the veterans and the citizens of Citrus County to realize that we celebrate a lot of events for veterans, but we forget sometimes that Memorial Day is for select group. They're called KIA's. These men and women who died in active duty while in service. This is the only day we serve for that purpose. And in Floral City, we have the biggest program in the county. And it'll be on the last Monday of the month, and I appreciate anybody showing up. You won't be disappointed, I promise.
Those representing Mental Health Month in Citrus County, Florida, if you could please come forward. Whereas mental health is an essential part of over, overall well-being impacting individuals, families, and communities across Citrus County. One in five American adults experiences a mental health condition each year. And whereas despite its prevalence, mental health remains shrouded in stigma, preventing many from seeking help. Early intervention and access to quality care are crucial for managing mental health conditions and improving quality of life. And whereas May is recognized nationally as Mental Health Awareness Month, providing an opportunity to raise awareness, combat stigma, and promote mental health resources. Now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby proclaim May, two thousand twenty-four, as Mental Health Month in Citrus County, Florida, and encourage all Citrus County residents to educate themselves and others about mental health conditions, treatment options, and available resources. Challenge stigma by speaking respectfully and inclusively about mental health. Seek help if they are struggling with their mental health and encourage others to do the same. Support organizations that provide mental health services and advocacy. Create safe and supportive environments for open conversations about mental health. Together, we can create a community where everyone feels empowered to prioritize their mental health, their mental well-being, and seek help when needed, executed this fourteenth day of May, two thousand twenty-four.
Good afternoon, Rachel Montgomery. I'm the Board President for NAMI Citrus. NAMI Citrus is a nonprofit affiliate organization that strives to promote mental health wellness through advocacy, education, empowerment, public awareness, and support so that all individuals and families affected by mental illness can build better lives. In the United States, mental health has long been plastered with stigma and often hidden with silence. This month, however, we illuminate this silence with the light of awareness and empathy by displaying the color green in many visible areas throughout the county. We acknowledge that mental health is not a sign of weakness but a facet of our humanity, deserving of understanding, support, and respect. I want to extend our gratitude of each of you for dedicating this proclamation to Mental Health Awareness Month. Your proclamation not only raises awareness but also fosters a culture of compassion and empathy within our community. I'd also like to specifically thank Commissioner Bays for her dedication to reshaping the narrative surrounding mental health and her bold initiatives to actively dismantle barriers and foster meaningful change in our community. As we observe Mental Health Awareness Month, let us strive to promote understanding, acceptance, and kindness in all that we do. And if you don't mind, I want to offer my friend Jose from Citrus High School. I'm so thankful that our students were able to attend. He'd like to also add to that.
Again, I would like to express my gratitude to the board for recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month. But I also want to emphasize that I'm a student at CHS, and we have observed that despite my generation being seen as the progressive or outspoken generation who's more open to discuss about mental health, the stigma still very much exists. And we developed a club that tries to end that stigma and really educate the kids. But, um, we want to ensure the adults of this county and to some of you as well, the parents here, that we want you guys involved in the conversation of mental health. We want you guys there in every step of the way. This would not happen. Mental health will never get better unless all of you are willing to involve, involve yourself and willing to educate yourself as much as your children. And so, um, we want to be the bridge to that. We want to help you guys connect with your children. We want to educate you guys on mental health. And so, um, yeah, thank you.
Those representing Water Safety Month in Citrus County, if you could please Those representing Water Safety Month in Citrus County, if you could please come forward. Whereas swimming and aquatic-related activities play a vital role in maintaining good physical and mental health as well as enhancing quality of life. Citrus County and Florida at large are blessed with many swimming pools and beautiful natural bodies of water. And whereas lack of swimming skills affects all of our community, but is an especially significant problem for children of lower-income families. However, drowning is preventable, and water safety education plays a crucial part in preventing drownings and recreational water-related injuries. And whereas the Nature Coast Water Safety Coalition, an outreach group with a focus on drowning prevention, consists of the Citrus County YMCA, KLAAS Coats, and the Florida Department of Health is committed to impressing upon in all our community in the importance of learning to float, swim, and have an adult present with a focus on intentionally watching swimmers anytime they are near water. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby proclaim May as Water Safety Month in Citrus County, Florida. Therefore, we wish to join other organizations in communicating the importance of swim lessons and other activities that prevent drowning. Executed this 14th day of May, 2024.
I want to share that as of today, in Florida, there's been 32 drowning deaths, none of which have happened in Citrus County. And we want to express our sincere appreciation for our community partners, the pools in the area, and the Board of County Commissioners for allowing us to spread this message and make sure that parents are aware and watching children as we move into the summer months. So, thank you. So, I'm Garrett Atkins. I'm the Senior Operations Director at the Citrus YMCA. YMCA has a number of water safety programs, many of which are free or at great discounts to the community so that we can ensure that there's no drownings in the county. Oh, we start at six months. Six months to 70 years old and anything in between.
A tribute to American World War II veteran, if you could please come forward. Okay, you're representing. Whereas Mr. Ernest Scanjio was drafted into the US Army on May 5th, 1943, after training at Fort Benning, Georgia. He joined as a paratrooper in the 551st Paratroop Infantry Battalion as a parachutist and rifleman. Mr. Scanjio participated in the main battles taking place in France. He took part in the Military Operation Dragoon, successful landing of the Allied in the south of France. He also participated in the liberation of southern France during World War II, the Battle of the Arndens, and in the Rhine-Lend Campaign. Today, Mr. Scanjio, who is 101 years old, resides in Homosassa, Florida. And whereas in the name of the French Republic Consul, General Raphael Trapp will recognize US veteran Ernest Scanjio, May 14th, 2024, for his contribution to the liberation of France. He will receive the insignia of the Chevalier des Legion de Honor, which means Knight in the Legion of Honor. The highest French distinction was created to reward eminent military and civil merits in the service of France. The Legion of Honor is the highest distinction that can be conferred in France on a French citizen as well as on a foreigner. It is attributed by the decree of the President of the French Republic. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby acknowledge US veteran Sergeant Ernest Scanjio in recognition of receiving the highest French distinction award. Executed this 14th day of May, 2024.
Thank you for reading that. So the French consul had reached out to me about this because Mr. Scanjio lives in my district. He's 101 years old and served in the US Army. But the French are recognizing him. They make a very big deal out of World War II because the US was imperative to them to help liberate their people. They're not speaking German. They're speaking French. So Mr. Scanjio's getting an honor in about 30 minutes in Homosassa from the French, and it's going to be a big deal. He's 101 years old and very anxious about the whole thing, but I'm sure the honor will be lovely, and I just wanted to make sure we were honoring him also here today. Thank you.
Those representing International Beef Month, if you could please come forward. Whereas International Beef Month is a time to recognize the importance of the beef industry and to celebrate the farmers and ranchers who work hard every day to raise and care for cattle, while also preserving the land and environment. The beef industry involves thousands of American farmers, ranchers, and processors who help keep the economy strong and food on our tables. Beef is an important source of nutrients that are vital for supporting good health, such as protein, vitamin B12, zinc, iron, phosphorus, and selenium. And whereas the United States is the world's largest producer of beef, primarily high-quality grain-fed beef, and is the second-largest consumer of beef in the world, with an average of 58.8 pounds of beef consumed per person in 2023. There are 89.3 million head of cattle in the United States as of January 1st, 2023. And whereas Florida ranked ninth in beef cows on January 1st, 2023, with an inventory of 895,000, and Florida ranked 18th in total inventory of cows January 1st, 2024, with a count of 1.56 million cows. And whereas by choosing to buy local and high-quality beef products, we support the livelihoods of those directly involved in the industry. This support helps pave the way to move to a more sustainable and ethical industry, prioritizing the welfare of animals and the environment. And whereas Citrus County farmers and ranchers work hard every day to provide us with high-quality beef products, helping support the local economy and creating more jobs for the Citrus County community. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the month of May, 2024, as International Beef Month. Executed this 14th day of May, 2024.
Thank you for recognizing the beef cattle, meat, beef, what we eat for dinner, and the beef cattle industry. Those of us here in Citrus County are just a fragment of a huge pie in the beef cattle industry, a sustainable industry. We raise high-quality protein. That's the centerpiece of the plate. Florida's a cow-calf state. We primarily raise calves to six, eight months before they go on to be sold to the back grounders or to the feedlots. Today, we're in one of the lowest inventories, total cattle inventories in the United States going back to, say, the 1950s. Every time there's a disaster somewhere in the United States, it affects rural America. But don't worry about it not being in the marketplace. Today, we're doing more with less, modern technology, just like in any of your businesses, the technology today and the young students coming out of the university coming up with great and innovative things that we use today. In 2003, 50% of Florida ag land was used for beef cattle production. The farm gate sales from 2003 was $670 million to Florida's economy, right here in the state. The checkoff, we have a checkoff. Each producer, every animal they sell, they give a dollar to the state and national beef checkoff. You see the checkoff and what it's for. And so with saying that, you look at the population of the state of Florida, 21 million in Florida. The staggering is 135 million visit here. It's a lot of plates to fill. And so other states like Kansas or Nebraska, that's a low people population but a high cattle population, a lot of times partner with Florida to do promotions and research and education for the consumers. The consumer wants to know more about the product today, how it's raised, how it's taken care of. I see the benefits of us as producers for the residents of Florida is this. It takes four to eight acres per cow-calf unit to grow the forages that it takes. And in this statement here, half of the ag lands was in cattle production. So we've got a lot of green space. We've got wildlife habitat on our ranches. And one of the things that we're all cognizant of is our water quantity and quality. And we value being a steward of that. We're able to do that with BMPs, cross fencing, rotational grazing, and slow-release fertilizers to be able to do that. These deep sandy soils that go down to the aquifer. That's important to us. It's important to all the citizens of the state of Florida. Thank you. Thank you for recognizing.
Those are a lot, but they were beautiful. Fun fact, my ad agency used to be Agency of Record for Beef Canada. So I know a lot about Canadian beef. I said my agency used to be Agency of Record for Beef Canada, so, anyway. All right. No, no, ma'am. No, 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 no. Yeah, so we are ridiculously late on our two time certains. No, we're not that late.
We could put in our CIP budget to get some cash so we can fix our clock. Or is it fixed now?
Yeah, he said he had to work on it. It was corroded. So are we ready to go on time certains? Yes, no, maybe? 1:30? All right. Legislative wrap-up from Sunrise Consulting Group. Dazzle us, gentlemen. Dazzle us.
Good afternoon. Gene McGee, Sunrise Consulting Group. First, let me introduce my partners, Sean Foster, Andrew Colwell. I'm gonna start with the money, and then they're gonna go to policy. We had a request to talk about at least one piece of legislation, and there are others that I think affect us then. So Sean's gonna, Sean and Andrew will cover those. So, next slide, let's kind of get right into it. We went up and asked for four projects, and we were funded partially on two. I find myself in the unique position of apologizing for bringing $5.6 million home. It's disappointing. The other three years that I've represented you up there, we've basically gotten everything we asked for. This year, we did not. I would tell you that of the two projects that were competitive, that we received basically half-funding for, we were in line in the last two or three days to get full funding on both those projects. Then asked for a billion dollars out of the budget at the end. $500,000 was for a toll rebate. $500,000 was for infrastructure around the University of Florida and other things that he wanted. That billion dollars came right out of the subcommittee that our two projects would have been funded from. So I believed right until the last three days that we would be fully funded on Watson Road and fully funded on the multipurpose path, but we were not. The Highway 41 request that came, Representative Masulo did yeoman's work, I think, of working with DOT to say, hey, I'm in a spot here. I have to have some money for Highway 41. What they explained to him was that it's in the work program, that the Highway 41 improvements will be funded and they're timed out. That even if they gave us money, they might speed up one section, but then it would sit there and wait until the next one were programmed. So unless we could get all the money, we weren't really accomplishing anything. So we didn't get any funding for that at all. Commissioner Kennard, I apologize, but boat ramps were not popular in Tallahassee this year. No boat ramp really got off the ground, none got any dollars in any segment, and we really couldn't make a dent on trying to convince people to do that. I would tell you that I'm happy with what we got because there are two projects. We've got half-funding on Watson Road, which you identified as your number-one priority. We got another $2 million for the multipurpose path, and we only need another couple of million for that. I would hope that we would try to get that next year and finish that project off. And I guess I would also hope that we go for Watson Road and try to finish that project off if it remains important to you. The county itself did okay. We also competed with a priority that the county needed in Crystal River with their Crystal River Government Center. And I know Representative Masulo had made a pledge to get them the $10 million to build the office complex there or their city hall. That again came right out of our sub, that we would compete for most of our money. But they were successful in that $10 million, and that kind of highlighted how we as a county were successful. I know we have certain projects that we want, but I think we all go up there and advocate for everybody's projects that help the county. We're pretty good at working as a team in this county, and so we go up and we don't kind of compete against them. We kind of work together and try to get money for everyone. So just a couple of highlights. Livestream was successful in getting almost $1 million to establish a new program to work with dementia patients. A lot of times, older people with dementia get caught up in the Baker Act system, and it's just not appropriate, just like you would treat an adolescent differently than you would treat a regular adult. I think you should treat a senior with dementia differently too, and this program will make a start on that. The $10 million Government Center, I think, was a big one. The Inverness State Trail Connector, which has been up two or three times. The 1.1 was funded this year. Both the Homosassa River Restoration Project and Save Crystal River for Our Rivers were funded in half, which was a recurring theme this year. No one really got full funding. In almost every instance, people got half-funding or no funding. Was kind of what happened. The YMCA got $1 million, which I thought was exciting for them to move forward. I think I'll stop and see if there are any questions on just our stuff in the county before I move on, about what happened with us or any questions I could answer.
I don't think that you have to apologize, Mr. McGee. I don't know of one other thing in the county that we spend money on that we get such a return on our investment. So I saw some of the things that was going on up there when I had the opportunity to visit, and I think these other projects, because they're partially funded, especially Watson, especially the Homosassa Trail FDOT project, I cannot see any way why they would not finish that, and thank you for all of your efforts.
Okay, the next slide is a general budget slide. I'm gonna let Sean talk a little. He's got some comments on that. What I would call your attention to is the environmental budget. Just asking for a legislative appropriation is not our only avenue for funding in this county. You know, through Ken Cheek's good efforts and other people, we've been very successful in septic-to-sewer projects in this county. A lot of that comes through grant funding. We don't have to identify a legislative request and go pull that out of general revenue. That's actually not the normal way. There's normal funding, and there's grant funding, and then there's legislative appropriation. So we have other ways to get money that we've been very successful at. In the environment, they put a lot of money away for water quality, for wastewater grants and things like that, and I think we need to be very aggressive in applying for these grants. I would say the same thing in the economic development area, that there's a lot of money put aside that we can go after in grants. So we should take the avenue to look for legislative appropriations and try to be successful in that arena, but we should also be very aggressive in filing for grants and working with the agencies to get grant money to fund these projects. And with that, I'm gonna introduce Sean Foster.
Mr. Kennard. Gene, the discussion prior to session was, I had asked about getting the Watson Road funding through a DEO grant. Now, we ended up getting half of it through legislative appropriation. Rather than going the appropriation route for the remaining half this year, is there a possibility, or what is the possibility, of getting the other half of that through the DEO grant so that we can save our appropriation requests for other projects that we're trying to get done? The Halls River Road multipurpose path, the boat ramp that needs to get going up on the Barge Canal?
Certainly possible, right? Nothing says if you start down the legislative appropriations avenue, you have to get all legislative appropriations. Funding can come from any source. I think it would be awesome if we could apply for a grant to DEO and get funded for the rest. For Watson Road, that'd be awesome. For Watson Road, that'd be awesome. If you remember, it started out as a project that was available for grant funding. And then the decision was made, hey, why don't we try to get legislative appropriation so we don't have to do the grant funding? So we got half. I don't think we should be shy about going back and asking for the other half in a grant. Then if not, we can make the determination if we want to use a legislative appropriation on it again.
Commissioner Schleber.
That's absolutely what I was going to ask. I think he looked at my notes. He was cheating off my notes. But I was going to say, economic development, is that possible for Watson Road to tap into some of that because it will be leading right to an industrial park, business park? So I'm sorry that he cheated off my sheet, but I love that idea of doing that. So thank you, Commissioner Kennard.
All right, I'm going to introduce my partner, Sean Foster and Andrew Colwell. They're going to go over some policy items.
I always joke, Gene gets to talk about the good stuff and we have to talk about all the legislatures going after local governments. But I'll add a little bit is the Job Growth Grant Fund is the one you were talking about. I think that was one that would work real well for it. And Gene was talking a little bit about Citrus County. Maybe we didn't get everything we wanted. There's not a single county out there that got half of what they wanted. It was, even though it was a year, you would think we had a lot of funding coming in. And I'll just give you a kind of comparison. We're at $117 billion budget and just kind of see how fast our state budget has grown. In 2010, we were at 73. So just think we're at 73 billion, you know, in 2010 and here we are just a few years later. But I also like to just kind of remind folks, you see this $117 billion budget, but only 50 billion is from general revenue. The other is pass-through dollars from the Department of Education. DOT is federal dollars coming from. And so 50 billion in that revenue. I do want to give just a little bit going, there's a little bit of tapping the brakes moving forward. Meaning we do revenue estimating conferences and trying to give you a little bit of an idea. Every single month since COVID, the revenue estimating conference would give you an amount of money that we expected to come in from sales tax revenues and all others. And in December was the first time that we not only did not hit those benchmarks, we went under. In December, it was kind of the softening of the housing market started to slow down. We saw the doc sales were a little bit less. Last month was the first time that sales tax revenue was down since COVID. So that kind of gives you an understanding. And the one thing that was up was investments. The first time in the largest amount since COVID. Investments were up, sales tax were down. And they went through the whole study and it explained more people are putting more money on credit cards. People are spending less. The funding from all the inflation that was happening and the cost of goods has started to stable. So when that happens, sales tax revenue. The reason I tell you that because we're being told that next year could be a little bit less funding than what they had originally projected. And that makes some things a little bit difficult. But I just want to give you a heads up for you all. And of course, priorities change. Anybody's budget, whether at home or in the state, your priorities where your money is spent. And leadership changes. We had the same speaker, same Senate President for two years and now we're going into a new Senate President and Speaker. The new Senate President was very kind. He spoke to the Citrus County, if you all came to it, I was there when he spoke. And he spoke to you all very directly. And Senator Albritton told us, he said, I am really interested in projects that are going to impact you all. That is water quality. That is going to be a new system that he thinks that he's going to bring about. Right now, we kind of bring it through the process and they, you know, they do it through a leadership. Usually gets some higher amounts. He believes the needs need to go, the dollars need to go where the needs are the greatest, whether it's septic to sewer or Indian River Lagoon. So I just want to, you know, he did really good and he asked us to follow back up with him over the summer about your needs also. So now we'll go a little bit into the other items that we have. And one of the big ones, the unauthorized public camping, right? Next slide, so sorry. This was a pretty controversial discussion, but it really comes down to this. I'm going to give you a really good example because a lot of folks were asking, how does this apply to us? We have homeless, we're, you know, we're saying the homeless can't be here in this park after 8:00 PM or whatever it is. That does not pertain to that type of ordinance. So let me give you an example where it pertains to. Pinellas County decided to put together a camp right next to their jail. They found out that a huge amount of folks that they were arresting were homeless. And it was more of a cost benefit if they set up a camp next to it. They're doing a phenomenal job. And one of the things that they found out too is when it was the coldest is when the rests and Baker Acts were the highest, by the way. Just think about that, the homeless number. And so what they're saying is if you do choose to make a certain area in public or to the homesteads where they go, these are the services you have to provide, whether it's the health and wellbeing through DCF and other items. Nothing says that you have to set up those type of camps, but if you do, these are the items that you will have to do. A lot of folks were very concerned that they were forcing cities and counties to do this, but that's not that situation. I hope that, I'm trying to give you the layman's term. I forgot how many pages this bill was, but it was quite largely discussed and debated.
Sean.
Yes, ma'am.
Have you read about what we're doing with Citrus Hope through Catholic Charities? So that was a matter of some discussion on the bus when we went down there to tour Pinellas Hope and Tampa Hope. The has to move within a year does not apply to what we're considering doing, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Correct. Yes, ma'am. Next one.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just a point of clarification that you started off the conversation or the comment with what we're doing.
I was talking about the outside, I'm sorry. Let me be clear, I was not referring to the board. We have not, it's not been presented to the board. It's just we as a community out there.
Yes, ma'am.
That are working on it. So thank you for that clarification.
Okay, next slide.
Commissioners, good afternoon. Last year, the legislature passed a piece of legislation requiring local governments, before they pass or adopt or change an ordinance, do a business impact statement and what the impact to local businesses were. It was for pretty much any ordinance that would allow a local organization to bring action against the county, except for any changes to the land development code. This year, the legislature went back and tweaked that bill from last year and added the land development code back in. So I know. So when you make changes to the land development code, you will need to proceed with it as you would any other ordinance with impact, business impact statements. Next slide.
So Fort Little Housing. Everybody had probably kind of grins on this one. It was a huge issue. As you heard, a little county south of you here, Pasco County, was really at the forefront of it. What essentially happened is Senate President, of course, looked at a need. And I'm just going to give you a couple of numbers real quick. Housing market, when it comes to multifamily, has grown for the rents over $1,200 a month by $700,000 in the past 10 years. For rents under $1,200, it has decreased by $400,000. So just, I know those are numbers you're probably know, but it just gives you a perspective. And I know $1,200 is not the amount. But the whole really discussion for Pasco County and others was, does the 80 to 120 AMI actually, you know, impact the folks for housing? And in Pasco County and others, it did not. So one of the things that they were willing to do is they're going to allow a Schenberg study that is done from the University of Florida. The Schenberg study had looked at saying if these folks meet these criterias, they do not have to allow the Fort Little Housing 75% off the, I'm so sorry, I'm sorry, 75% or the 100%. So you get the 100% if you offered 80% or less on the AMI for your rates. If it was between 80 and 120, you would get 75% off your taxes. The Schenberg study had come out that there were several counties, kind of like Pasco, where that need was being met. What is the need being met? Meaning that the affordable rents are already between 80 and 120 and that these folks are already getting those rents for their current amounts, wouldn't need that reduction in their sales taxes to bring in more of that housing. The legislature allowed us to do that. That bill was obviously very tenacious throughout it. But I think you also see a lot of the needs being met through this bill and continuing. And probably some tweaks. Senator Albritton felt like there would be a need to be some tweaks, but we kind of think that's going to be a little bit interesting because Senator Pasadena was still going to be there for another two years. And this was really a vision of hers to have moving forward. So I know this was a bill that we gave you a lot of information about during session and we'll give all the other details to your attorney that'll be working on this. Did you have anybody apply under the Live Local Act this year? No? No. So that was a big thing. A lot of folks were getting very, you know, concerned about this. And then Pasco ended up adding two that were going to and one that did. And by the way, if anybody does apply, do want to leave this. So they do end up applying. And the next year, those rents are not in the 80 to 120, they don't get that sales tax reduction for 30 years. So remember, if somebody applies for it, they can get that up to 30 years. But since somebody applied right now, that's not an issue. But if you ever need anything on that, we'd be happy to help too.
Thank you.
Two pieces of legislation that were filed or that passed this year, kind of building on some legislation last year. As you know, the state has a shorting for housing units and we see more and more track home developments coming online faster and faster. Be that as it may, how you feel about that. Two pieces of legislation that passed that will require a local government to help expedite that process. And I put these bills together on one slide, Senate Bill 812 and House Bill 267. Senate Bill 812 has more to do with planned community developments, like a Lennar Home subdivision or KB or something like that, that the local government, the county, will have to create if they don't already have one. Some local governments do. An expedited building permit process for large developments to get those building permits out faster. Part of that legislation will actually require the local government to keep a list of private providers that are available to review plans when there's lots of applicants. So we can get those going through quicker and not delay the building process. The other bill, House Bill 267, has to do with building permits generally, not just planned developments, planned community developments, and create stricter timelines that a local government will have to accept the application for a permit, review it and either approve it or deny it within a certain timeframe. That's kind of the high level on that legislation. Next slide. I know this probably doesn't pertain to Citrus County quite in the same way as it does some other counties because I don't believe y'all have a vacation rental program. However, I'm sure there are some vacation rentals in Citrus County. And at the time, as our population expands, perhaps they become in need of regulation. As we know, vacation rental regulation was preempted to the state back in like 2011. However, there has been a conversation in the legislature about expanding on the regulatory framework of what local governments can do. And this year, we passed a piece of legislation that allows the local government to have a registration program. It's not licensure. The state will still license vacation rentals, but it allows the local government to, one, charge a fee for an inspection, inspect that piece of property for fire code or building code when they're inspecting it. And then also gives you an opportunity to tell the owner, I need somebody who's available for those 24 hours a day. So when there's a problem, our law enforcement or whoever, our code enforcement can reach out and have a list of information who owns the property. That bill's not been signed yet by the governor. We don't know, the governor has publicly said he's not a fan of it. So we don't know if it'll be vetoed, if it'll be signed into law. We're waiting to see what happens. Do you want to do it? Also, House Bill 479 has to do with transportation impact fees predominantly. Some jurisdictions, as much of the legislation that we discuss that affects the government administration, affects local government administration, sometimes comes from other areas, obviously not Crystal River and Citrus County doing those kinds of things. But some local governments, I believe, were double charging developers transportation impact fees. So this piece of legislation passed that will require local governments, when there is a development going on that perhaps runs between municipal boundaries into the county or between two counties or between two cities, to enter into an MOU and essentially figure out the formula based on some data that you have to have to figure out who charges what building and transportation fee and make sure those fees are fairly charged.
Real quick on the next one, it's the PACE programs, essentially just adding a few items. I know this can be controversial for some with some bad actors, but it essentially just added wastewater treatment, flood mitigation, but also has some more consumer protections in the bill. I know we've got a few more slides. We're trying to help you get caught up.
Cybersecurity incident liability. Obviously, we've seen several government entities around Florida be hacked for ransomware. Obviously, the county doesn't want to be liable for those types of things. So the state will be promulgating like a certification program that the county will be able to go through for their IT and for their cyber programs and be able to have a hold harmless in the event of some kind of incident where the county would be liable for a cyber attack. There's also a grant fund available that was put in. We talked about grants. Last year, there was about $40 million for local governments to apply for cybersecurity grants to help beef up their systems. That money was never spent, so that money was re-appropriated for this coming up fiscal year. So effective July 1, the county would be able, if they had some interest in some kind of cybersecurity program or project they wanted to work on to apply to the state for grant funding.
Mr. Howard, are we aware of that, Mr.?
We've been attending some of the educational programs already, senior staff and others. I'm not sure about the grant that people will follow up with. I'm sure Todd's all over it.
We can make sure, I think Todd already has.
Okay, thank you.
I know you're probably aware of these, so I'll just mention it briefly. The homestead exemptions on the next page. If approved by the voters, in this general election, the bill's going to amend the current law to allow annual positive inflation to the current exemption. Of course, that's going to impact you. And of course, the school district levy is from 50 to 75,000. HJR 7017 also is another constitutional amendment that will annually adjust it. The 25,000 homestead exemption to 50 and 75,000, between 50 and 70,000, 75,000 for inflation. And the amendment will also be voted on the 2024 general election, I believe. I know you worked on this one here, the Florida retirement.
Obviously, Citrus County being a county government on the Florida retirement system, every year the state passes their new rates in an FRS package. So your costs for your employees are going to go up again. It was a much more robust piece of legislation, making some bigger changes, but ultimately it whittled down to just the standard FRS package adjusting for new rates and the employer costs for employees.
The next one we're trying to get through because these are pretty simple, the continuing contracts. Remember, just a few years ago was at 2 million. I believe we then increased it just two years ago to 4.5 million. We've now done it to 7 million, but we won't have to continue to keep coming back to us because they added the CPI index. So that 7 million will continue to rise as the CPI index rises. Also, the last ones we did, and I'm sorry, 70, oh, 70173. Yeah, I can talk about that real quick. That was a big one. I apologize. That's going to have a couple of items in HB 70173 taxation. The local tax provisions are in there, the doc sales tax, what else? Sales tax holidays, you just heard him talk about the half a billion off for folks. There was even something, I just saw the rentals.
Power tool.
Power tools, but also commercial rents. This tax was just reduced also.
And there's also a temporary break in taxes on your property insurance premiums. So in your flood insurance premium. So that came out of the state tax package as well to try to help with the property insurance costs. One bill that's actually not on here that I'd like to bring up very quickly is the Department of Environmental Protections Agency Package, which is all of the state's changes to environmental policy for the year. Couple of things to highlight from there is the state is trying to have DEP, instead of previously DOH, review new septic systems, like advanced septic systems, new technology to get it into the marketplace faster. And they're trying to get water management districts to promulgate rules that allow local governments and citizens to draw down on reclaimed water faster as well, get reclaimed water out into the, I don't use the word marketplace, but out into the world quicker. I think those are good things, so.
And the last slide right here, just to tell you things, kind of what to expect to come back next year. You'll see the first one, sovereign immunity. That got pretty close to passing this year. We were told to expect that to come back. What impacts you, of course, is the repeal of local business taxes under Chapter 2005. The tourism development tax changes, those were, we were all alarmed. I saw your face in these. We were all alarmed about that around the state. That was fortunately pushed back. We were told to expect some changes to that to come back again next year. And the last thing, you know, they did special district term limits. They did school board term limits recently. And now the next item we hear they're coming back on is to push through the county commission term limits. So you may want to speak to your delegation about some of those concerns if you have on any of those items.
Sean, two things. One, I sat on the Florida Association of Counties Committee that put forward the TDC tax changes. I, for the record, voted against it. It still passed and I guess we pushed that up. Secondly, where are we with no longer having to mandate someone give their name for code compliance? Because this was, this was a big deal on our committee. So many of the commissioners were saying we've got elderly people living next to meth heads and they're scared.
Andrew gained a lot of gray hair over this issue.
So last year, there was a Senate bill filed allowing a one-year exemption for whoever reports it. There was no House member that picked that up. This year, there was a senator who was willing to do that. And I let, I actually work with the Code Enforcement Association. We had another stakeholder who was working on finding a House member. The timing just didn't work out. So next year, we will be more vigilant in getting that done. This year, it just, it fell off. But we did actually speak to the two legislators who got that legislation passed a few years ago to see what their temperature was on changing it. And I felt that it was not a adamant, no, don't go touch that. It was, hey, we realize that there's been some changes. We feel that the life, safety, health, welfare thing should be enough. And then we're like in real world, no, it's not. But I'll follow up with you a little bit actually after this, some more information.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Board?
I have a couple of comments. It's my understanding from a presentation that was given to us by our growth management director that there's just absolutely no way that we can get back to concurrency. And I would say that the limitations that the legislature has put on local governments with concurrency, impact fees, it puts us at a real disadvantage on how we can meet the needs of a growing community. It's not a one-size-fits-all. We're not a metropolitan area or a small county that's growing up. And we have big ticket items that we need to address, but we're kind of handcuffed by some of the legislature bills. bills that have preempted local governments. And it's very concerning to me. We can only do impact fees once every four years. There's an amount that we're limited to how much we can raise them. We can't meet concurrency, and frankly, we, there's not much that we can do with these developers when they come in with a, a large development impact that can help us, and we've talked to you about this on 491. You know, we know that that developer has the right to come in and put in over 6,000 homes and 250,000 square feet of commercial real estate, and it's a two-lane road. And, you know, that's the one thing I said with you in the room last year when we visited our legislator and our senator, and I said, what, I've always been told, if you're going to come knocking on the door, what tools do you have in your toolbox that you're not utilizing? That's what I would like to hear. What is it that you would like for us to do as a community to utilize all the tools in our toolbox, so that when we come to you and we say, we need help, how do we get that help? You know, if I, I look at it and I'm, you know, we have a space needs issue. The judges want more space, everybody needs more space. I don't, you know, are they going to give us 10 million, 15 million dollars to build space for the county? So, I mean, is that something that we should be putting on for our appropriation, so that we can facilitate getting that kind of money back to the county, to the local government, to the taxpayers? Because it's, they're all taxpayers. So those are some of my concerns. I'm very concerned about FRS. There is a huge unfunded liability setting out there on FRS, and we keep expanding it, and I'm not sure where those dollars are going to come from. And, and, you know, we're talking budgets now, and I, that's, that's just a real issue for local governments and the state. But those are, I mean, those are just comments. I know it's nothing for you to do today, but, you know, I think if you can hear our concerns and you take them back to Tallahassee, we have a hard time meeting the needs of the citizens, the taxpayers, without just having exorbitant taxes. And you, you said it best, you know, you're seeing the reduction in sales tax across the state and, and the dock stamps. You know, groceries are up, everything's an introvert, and everybody's contracting and figuring out how they're going to get through this next tough time, and, but yet, the development is not stopping, and we can't fund it.
I, I do have a response, and it's amen. You're right, you're right. Washington does it to, to the states, and the states do it to the cities and counties. They don't pay the attention they should to local governments in Tallahassee. I'll tell you that, everyone knows that. The Florida Association of Counties, the League of Cities does a great job advocating these points, but their arguments fall on deaf ears many times. The state believes they can do it better than the local government, the federal government believes they can do it better than the state governments. And I don't know how to fix that. I mean, I can go up and advocate for our position, but it is frustrating to represent a county and to go up and have, really, a lot of times behind the Florida Association of Counties or the League of Cities, because it's just not Citrus County, it's, every county's affected, every city's affected, to make really good arguments why this legislation's unfair, you've taken control of something that you shouldn't have control of, that we should have control of at the local level, or you forced us to implement something at the local level, and then you're not giving us the money to pay for it. This happens all the time, and it's a unanimous vote, or, or maybe it's a partisan vote to, to pass it along. It's, it's very frustrating representing a county. So I think your comments are right on point, and I don't know how to solve the problem rather than to keep advocating on our behalf, but it's a, it's a serious problem.
It's a, it's, I know, I'm going to get right, it's almost a cousin to an unfunded mandate, because the state drives, they've, they've thrown the doors open, all of the state policies are driving people to Florida in droves, but then they are hogtying us on how we can try to get ahead of that growth with proper decision-making. Between that and property rights, there's just a lot of things we can't do. Commissioner Baze?
On term limits, I don't have an issue with term limits for county commissioners, but I think it needs to be 16 years, and I'll tell you why. You go to the legislature, you get eight years. You can graduate to senate, get eight years. County commission has more responsibility to the commission, to the citizens that affects their everyday lives. We have to know way more stuff than what they do in Tallahassee, and you've got no place to graduate to.
I was just saying, I mean, it was Senator Angolia that passed, that tried to pass that bill, and maybe some, one of the persons we can talk to this summer, too.
We've all talked to him.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
I think that's happened.
Okay.
You know, I think, you know, if, if you can take your, your legislative experience in Tallahassee and convert it to senate, or whatever you do, or you go on someplace, but as a county commissioner, you've, you're losing so much history and, and just historical knowledge about how to move a county forward if you just cut them off at eight years, because you can't grow, and it gets you through the cycle, maybe with some of this, the changing of term length, or the, the cycles of being elected, I think would be really important. And I don't have, I don't have a problem with term limits, but I think 16 years as a commissioner, because citizens have an opportunity to vote you out if you're not doing a good job, but I think you have to have that, that knowledge. I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot to learn. I can tell you, I'm a much better commissioner this go around than I was the first time. I mean, I was just learning land development code and comp plan and how the inner workings, and it takes a long time to get that and, and have an understanding on what you're voting and, and the implications of it.
Yeah, you truly don't, you have no idea until you're at least in year three. It's, it's rough. So, thank you. Anything further?
Nope.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, H2, COPS grant. And we will be going to open to the public next for anyone who's trying to track along on the agenda.
Just watch. Who popped the can?
What?
Who popped the can?
I didn't.
Who did that?
Oh.
Oh.
Sheriff?
That was pretty funny.
Good afternoon, commissioners. We have submitted a current application with a wide range of information about the COPS grant for 2024, and we forwarded a note to all of you and solicited your support to apply for the COPS grant in accordance with the timeline established by the Department of Justice. It's a two-step process with a deadline for the application. First deadline is June 6, and the final deadline is June 12. Do you have any questions about the information we've provided?
Seeing none?
Sorry, Sheriff, any glasses?
I do, too.
On, on just one of your form with the estimated costs, looks like this.
Yes?
The colored form. You have estimated costs at the top that don't quite correlate with the estimated cost at the bottom. I'm not quite sure why, I, I think the top is more accurate of where, where we'll be. That, that was the only hiccup maybe that I had on this form.
I'm not sure I follow you, Commissioner Finnegan.
The estimated cost as of 10/1/2026 on the top, 6.4 million roughly, and then when you go down to the bottom, it says estimated total cost year five, and it drops down to 4.9, so roughly $5 million.
The, the primary difference is the first-year startup costs are substantially higher, and year two, three, four, and five, we're not incurring the startup costs for those new positions. Each net new position now is projected to cost $197,000 per position as of 1 October 2024.
So you think year three, let's call it 2026, is going to be a million and a half more than year five?
I'm not, I'm not, year, year three is 2026, but that's technically, that's the beginning of the third year. Where, where are you referring to year five on this chart?
At the very bottom of that, in, in your green highlight, estimated total cost year five, 4954.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's because of the difference in the recurring costs. We're not buying new weapons every year, we're not buying new cars every year. The bulletproof vest we have has a five-year life expectancy on it. The radios have an eight-year life expectancy on them.
Completely understand that. But year three, I'm just calling it year three at the very top, you have total cost of an entry sworn deputy, and that cost in 2026 is considerably more than year five, and we, and you should be covered under the grant in year 2026.
Are you talking about the difference between 132,000 for year two and then 139,000 for year three?
Talking about this number up here versus the numbers down here.
We've put, we factored in a 5% inflation rate going through those years. I, I really don't see precisely, without you pointing to me on this chart that I'm looking at, and maybe letting me borrow your reading glasses to know.
May I?
Sure.
Sorry, I thought it was an easy question. You're talking about from this right here and then down below for year four and five, correct?
Yes. Yeah, because I would count like 1, 2, 3, that's a price, and then you have down here 5, and I'm like, how does 5 get to be less money than year three? You're not buying new stuff in year three either. That's just where my head went.
Breakdown, because Director Sefren's not here, but it's all because of replacement values on different items.
You're replacing things in...
We need, we need this right into the record, though. I'm speaking to the mic, please.
So you're replacing things in year three, a million and a half? I, maybe these are what, that's, I just got tripped up about that. I thought there'd be an easy explanation, like maybe I was just missing something.
Jenny, did you say anything different?
No.
Yeah, we didn't bring those extra sheets with us, because those weren't requested.
You need my glasses, Sheriff?
No, I got you.
The difference is, some of our items have a replacement value over five years, eight years, and 10 years. So some of the difference can be the cost of those replacement items. The initial costs are going to be all in year one. That's going to be the new purchase for anything that's new duty gear, new vehicles, et cetera. Over the course of the five, eight, and 10 years is replacement cost.
Okay.
I was talking about in three years.
Talking about the difference here in three years. This may cost entry sworn. We can go back and work that.
Madam, Madam Chairman?
So, no, here's the difference, and we've had this discussion with all of y'all last year when we sat in the office. When we get to year four and five, there's no grant funding. The grant funding pays for the three years of the draw of $125,000 per sworn position that we add, divided by three. So it's $41,666 per year, for year, basically what amounts to one, two, or three, or two, three, or four. Once you get to year five and, and beyond, the growth in the county is going to completely absorb all of those costs for those recurring salaries.
I was going to point to Commissioner Davis, she was asking which number it was.
No, it's Commissioner Schleball.
I, I think that Sheriff, that in 2024, per bit, per position, you have 197 approximately, you explained that. Then the second year with the grant, it's 132, 132,000 per position. Year three, 139 per position, 139,000 per, per position. That is with the COPS grant, that is with 5%. But then when you go to year four, your, your per position goes down to 102. So we're missing 37,000 per position. That's even without the COPS grant, and I think that is what flagged me, that the position went down when actu, actually, it should be the other way, because for, year four and year five, you do not have the COPS grant. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, like I said, if there's a question specifically about year four and five costs, when Director Sefren's back in the office, we'll relook that number and send that number over to you. The highest, the highest costs are the first-year costs.
The highest, three, first three years?
Well, no, the highest costs are the first-year costs.
Yeah.
And then there's a very precipitous drop-off for year two and three and beyond.
It, it looks like, it looks like a, an error, and, and it would be, it would be...
It could be a Scribner's error when she got down there and started working on the footnote in the chart.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Kennard.
Sure.
Commissioner?
Thanks for being here. I'm going to take the same approach that I've taken the previous seven years. I've said in the past that I think that our job is to approve a budget number for your office. I don't know a darn thing about running a sheriff's office, but what I do know is the pie's only so big. Each of our constitutionals get a certain part of that pie, and when it comes to budget time, I, I'll be ready to approve a budget number for your office, and then how you spend that money is completely up to you and the folks on your staff. If ultimately, if you can hire 46 new officers, hallelujah, I think we need them. If you can only hire, afford to hire 20, well, then that's going to be up to you. I feel like our job is to approve that budget number, and then what you do with it from there, like I said, is up to you and your folks. I'm not, I'm not going to get into the weeds and try and micromanage how to, I'm not suggesting that my colleagues are, but I'm not going to get in the weeds and say, we need 22 officers, or we need, maybe we need 55 new officers. I, I have no idea, but I, I do know budget numbers, and that's where I'll be.
Commissioner Finnegan, thank you. Commissioner Kennard?
I agree. I was saying the same thing, and I didn't mean, mean to get in the weeds on that, I just, it, it was a sheet, and I didn't understand it, and I wanted to understand it. Sheriff, you don't have to sell me, I'm 46 deputies. You don't. I, I would like to, to give you more than 46 deputies. There, there's two things I have done, because honestly, I, I agree with Commissioner Kennard. I, I can't tell you how many deputies you can afford, I just have to look at the budget. So I am torn down the middle. I want to support you 110% in everything you're trying to do. Yet, I need to protect the taxpayers, and when I was looking and when I tried to nail down some of those numbers, I see your budget as a whole, you're just roughly today at shy of $40 million. If you increase that budget by 5% this year, I don't, I don't know what you're going to ask for, you may not even know that yet yourself as you're fixing your numbers, that's going to be roughly $2 million. If you compound that, you know, even if we just said 2 million every year, which obviously the number would start going up, in another five years from now, that's 10 million added to the budget. If we added all of this also, I think by the year we get to year five, that's another 10 million. So I don't know how, that, that's the only problem I have, is I don't know how we go from 40 million today and in five years, get to 60 million. I, I don't know that, that we could bear that. It's been said a lot that you have 40% of the general revenue. I asked Erin to run us some numbers. She did it at, I think, 3%, was it 7, 8%, 5%? I, I looked at the highest she gave us, that, that were estimated to go... I looked at the highest she gave us that, that we're estimated to get with the new growth. And that's 8% for us. That's 8,180,000. 40% of that is 3,272,000. And I don't know if you need some numbers today or what this board will decide. But that's 40% taking it off the top of what we think we're going to get new. And I hope, I hope that would help you get deputies. And I think the ultimate decision of how you apply for this grant is, is up to you. Because you, you know what you need, we don't. The second thing I would like the board to consider for you is, um, and I understand that every year the constitutional officers have to give their money back. You sometimes can't fill positions, yet I think that you need all that money, or maybe plus for overtime. We don't want to obviously have tons of overtime. It's going to overwork your people. I would like this board to consider at the end of the year, whatever money you have to give back, whether it's little or a lot, that it stays in a bucket for you. That way, when a need comes up for something like body warm cameras or something that he's looking for, that, that money is there. I'm not, I'm not saying that at the end of the year, there's like a spend down. I know a lot of nonprofits and government agencies do that. But I think that's an encouragement for everyone in your department that's in control of funds to say, we know this money is going to be put to good use and we want to preserve and be fiscally prudent as much as we can because we know that's going to help us in the long run. So I know that's not on the agenda for us to discuss about keeping his money with his agency for future use. But I, I would like to see that happen. I think that would be beneficial to the sheriff and the people that you employ that serve us well.
Commissioner Schlebo?
Sheriff, last year, I voted to give you every penny you asked for.
No ma'am, you did not.
You asked for 39 million. We gave you 39 million. Yes. We gave you your full budget. Three of us voted to give you your full budget. We didn't vote for the cops grant, but what, your budget, what you asked for, we gave you every penny you asked for. We didn't cut you one bit. So you know it, you know it's true. So the thing, the point is.
Sheriff, this is her time. You've already taken to social media. This is her time.
The point is, I want, I want to.
Very nice, Commissioner Davis.
Sheriff, I want to see you get everything that you need to run your office, like Commissioner Kennard said. So I don't know how to do it. I don't know what your budget's going to say. But I have consistently voted to give you every penny you've needed because I think public safety is very important. So I don't know how to get there, but I just want you to know that I'm going to vote to try to get you there. And that's all I wanted to say. It wasn't to have an argument with you. It was to say that I supported you last year. I'm going to try to support you again this year with your budget. And I don't know where it's gone off the rails, but, um, evidently, there's a problem here.
And I agree with what Commissioner Schlebo said. I've supported you last year and I will support your needs this year as well. Just wish that that was the story that was told. I did try to get the cops grant across the line. You know I did. Anyone else? Do you have anything else?
Yeah, I do. As a matter of fact, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, what I can say is that we didn't get everything that we were promised last year. We were told on October 1st of 20, actually in late September of 2022. Fill all your positions, Sheriff. When you do, come back with a budget amendment and we'll give you the 22 deputies you asked for. We submitted a letter to the B O C C and hand-delivered it to this man right over here on March 1st of 2023. In July of 2023, with barely two scant months left on the calendar for the fiscal year, we got 10 of those 22 positions that we asked for to roll out and continue to build the capacity of this agency to support our needs. Hope is not a method. Hard work is a method and hard work is what gets the job done. I'm looking at a chart right now. Since 1969, Citrus County's population has grown by 761%. The state of Florida's population has increased by 227%. The US population has increased by 64%. Just in the past three decades, our population has grown from 93,000 to 171,000. Over the past four years, the County General Fund grew by 43%. But the constitutional officers budgets, including mine, only grew by 29%. Yet, the B O C C general funds over the last four years went up by 62.7 million dollars. We could have bought every position in that cops grant last year when that cops grant was laid on his email machine, the same time it was laid on mine, and the same time that everybody on this commission was informed. In the past four years, we've approved 64,000 building permits in this county. And we have hundreds of millions of dollars of commercial and residential real estate under development. That is long overdue. Lots of infrastructure. All of that development and commercial and residential goes to this chart right here. And this chart shows back in 2010, we had a good ratio of sworn law enforcement officers in this community to the population back then. We went from over 1.6 sworn law enforcement officers per 1,000 citizens to now, we're down below 1.3 sworn law enforcement officers per 1,000 citizens. And that's not factoring in one iota of the tourism dollars that come in from 1.65 million tourists that come to this county, according to the data that came out of the T D C for the fiscal, uh, calendar year 2022, while we still wait for the 2023 data to come out. The needs are there. The calls for service are more difficult than they've ever been. Every call for service that we get, 18% of the time requires two or more deputies. We're one mistake away from the continued neglect and really non-support of this agency from a very critical failure. And we don't want to be the agency that's on the front page by something that could have been prevented had we had the requisite staffing to support the men and women in blue. And speaking of back in the blue, it's not just a bumper sticker on the back of your car. It's the deeds that match the words that come out. And I have not gone to social media about any of this conversation today, Commissioner Davis. But I can willingly do that because I know what the back and white, the black and white facts are. And every time you guys call, we want to get a deputy out to support every single citizen's call. But sometimes people are waiting for hours for a simple call from a deputy to go out and resolve a problem. And that's because we don't have enough assets. And neglect and negligence on the part of our roles is what gets people killed in the line of duty.
Sure.
And tomorrow is the day we're going to pause and remember the three Citrus County men who died in the line of duty, serving our citizens, risking their lives, and putting it all on the line for people that they don't even know sometimes.
I have said repeatedly in public that you need more deputies. And at least several of the other commissioners, Commissioner Bayes is ahead of you, you need them, Bayes. What percentage difference do you have in sworn law enforcement now than you did in 2007?
We are less today by a small fraction than where we were. Because we have put more deputies into public schools than what we had in 2007. We added nine deputies back in 2018 after Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School shooting. We added 10 deputies last year.
So what's total law enforcement in the county is at what percentage of 2007? Because that was before the big drop in our.
It was before the big drop. We're, we're right about at that, is it in the September?
And I'm including the schools.
If you include the schools and the city contracts, I don't get, it doesn't go back to 2007. It's 2010. Yeah. 2010, we had 224, not counting everything that we've got contracted with the cities and not counting the nine additional deputies that are in the schools and not counting the 10 that we added last year.
I assume you probably had a big drawdown and it was higher in 2007 than it was in 2010? Because there was a bloodletting in all county government after Florida power.
After the recession.
So we, we as a county, I just want to put something out there. I have said repeatedly that you need more deputies. I have absolutely backed all of this within the realms of, as Commissioner Kennard would say, the amount of money that we have to apportion. The county staff is only now starting to come into the same level of county staff that we had in 2007. What's the population difference, Mr. Howard?
I don't have that, but I, we're, we're still, we're about 44 positions down still.
Down from 2007?
Duke, the Duke, uh,
Yeah.
You know, caused some of that as well, but just based on the last financial outlook that you did, that study that you did several years ago.
We, we are in one of the most challenging times in our county's history. And we just, I would please ask that we just all work together as a team to try to get through this as we try to level up everything and still keep our taxes as low as we can.
I would love to do that, Commissioner. And, and I, in 2021, we came in here with you, Commissioner Schlebo, and Commissioner Kennard, along with two other commissioners. And we talk about a modest increase of five sworn positions to make our marine unit more robust than what it was.
Which I backed.
Because you absolutely wanted it. Someone didn't get a chance to read all the documentation and didn't vote in favor of it. We could have started that process in 2021. And we should have started that process in 2021. I would rather rapidly deploy the minimum we've got out there on time to the right place with the right equipment than say, I wish I would have had that five years ago. That's a starting point. The very next year, we came in with a very thoughtful, deliberate plan with 22 in the budget for the first year, 15 in the second year, and I believe it was 12 for the third year, and then come back and reevaluate to continue to grow our staff in accord with our needs for the citizens that are demanding our services, but also in accordance with a population growth that is going in a fast direction away from what we've ever seen historically. And that telling chart about the percentage difference between Florida's population growth and Citrus County's population growth over the past 50 years should bring us all to a halt in what we're thinking about when it comes to public safety. It absolutely should.
It wakes me up at night.
And I have encouraged working together with all of you so that we can get this done. But it takes courage and willpower to stand up and let's work together. And if we can't work together, we're not doing what we said we were going to do when we got elected to these offices.
Commissioner Bayes?
Just to reiterate, I mean, you gave some numbers there as much as the ad valorem has grown. Our ad valorem hasn't grown that much because our ad valorem just equalized to 2008. That's how much money we lost. And we laid off 25% of our employees and we're still behind the eight ball. We're behind the eight ball on a lot of things. I mean, we, roads, utilities, I mean, we, we have a whole laundry list of things that we're behind on. And if we don't take care of those things as equally as to much as what you're talking about, there's not going to be a need for that command staff because people are not going to want to live here. If this county is going to fall into such decline if we don't keep pace with where we need, what the things that we need to do on this side of the ledger. In addition to what you asked for last year, I believe that we also gave, was it two and a half million? Or 2.3 million additionally? So that, we gave that additional two and a half million and, um, you know, I, I, I guess I'm a little astounded. It's, when you came in March last year, your starting salary for a deputy, um, just the base salary was 55,000. By June 1, it had gone up to over 60,000. I'm not sure what the base salary is because you only have it in here, uh, it looks like you've got it at about 102, 2,000, I'm guessing, with benefits, salary and benefits. So, I mean, those are some, the pretty astounding numbers to, for starting positions. And then when I go onto your website and I look, it says you've got deputies that you're wanting to hire and it's 2550 an hour, which is $55,000. And that's, well exceeds what you're asking for here. I'm not here to belabor it. The fact of the matter is, I'm just going to tell you where I'm at. We can afford the cops grant. Second thing is, Madam Attorney, has anything changed from when the cops grant was presented to us previously that you advised us from legal counsel that we shouldn't be signing it? Has anything changed?
Nothing changed.
Nothing changed that I know of.
So I'm still not in a position that I would want to obligate this board, the citizens of this county, or any future boards to having to fund that. What I, again, I was the person that asked, what was going to be your, your budget increase ask? You're 15 days out from presenting that. You told us it's not due till June 1. I find it a very difficult position to even entertain or talk about this until we know what that number is. You know, and I think once we have your budget request, we can then put some real numbers to it and try to come up with a solution. And, you know, figure out where we can go from there. But again, I'm, I'll say it again, it's exactly what I said to you before. We all work for the same people, the taxpayers, the citizens of this community. It's not the Board of County Commissioners' money, it's their money. And the more, you said it, the more we can work together, and this is what I asked you last year. Let's work together. Let's be partners. That's what we're, that's what we're meant to do. We're like business partners and we have to put the money out there that we have, work together to find the solution. We can't give you what we don't have, or we can't give you what they don't have. They're trying to figure out how they're going to pay for prescriptions and insurance on their house and keep the lights on. I mean, look at the, the increase in electrical cost. We just had our lobbyists come up here and tell us how everything is inverted right now. People just don't want it. And we took, we, there were three people, three commissioners that voted for a mileage increase last year to help give you part of what you wanted last year. So I, I don't know where we can, I, I don't think we're in a position today to ask for anything until we know what your budget request is and then go from there.
Commissioner Kennard?
Yeah, I, um, I just wanted to respond to something that the sheriff said, you know. I don't, I don't, I'm not hearing anybody up here saying you don't need more deputies. I think that everybody fully understands that needs to happen. How you choose to pay for them, I personally think the cops grant, while it may not necessarily be the best grant in the world, if it decreases your costs on hiring deputies, then I, I would support it. You're, you're going to get a number out of us. That number sounds like it may be 3% or 5% higher than what it was last year. How you spend that money, again, is completely up to you and your budget folks. But I'm not hearing that we don't see the need for additional deputies. That part's up to you, though.
Commissioner Finnegan?
Well, as stated before, the sheriff knows how to spend his money. And whatever, whatever money we can give over and above this year with, you know, like I said, I did the numbers on that 8% value. But I don't think we should not sign this grant. If the sheriff decides, okay, I'm being a partner, I'm not getting enough where I can apply for 46, but he wants to apply for 25 or 15 or five or whatever number he comes up with. If the, if the name Michael Prendergast is on that grant, I think that the Board of County Commissioners should also sign that grant. That it's not new. The Board of County Commissioners and the previous sheriff has implemented this grant in years past. Forsee the sheriff doing anything knowingly that would put the county in harm. And I don't see the DOJ ever coming after anyone unless, you know, there was fraud. And I, I don't see that happening. If the sheriff wants to sign a grant, I think the Board of County Commissioners should also sign the grant.
Commissioner Bayes, Commissioner Schlebo, anything?
I, I don't know how we're going to afford it. You asked for 40 last year.
You asked for 40 last year, we couldn't afford 40. You, you said to me that I was wrong, when I know I wasn't wrong. You asked for 39 million in September and we gave you 39 million. Whether you negotiated down from 22 deputies to 10 had nothing to do with, with what was presented to us. You presented a budget, we spent two hours meeting together, and we gave you that full amount you asked for. So, this, this COPS grant, would you be, you know, no matter what I say, it's going to be, it's not going to be right for you because you're in charge of how many people you need. But we can't afford 46. You know, you, we got 10 last year, could we do 10 again this year? Could we do 10 with the COPS grant? But that's your decision. I, I just think if you, it's all or nothing with you. Could you work with us? We can't afford 46, that the final amount. We get emails saying, "Don't, don't support this COPS grant." We, if you can tell me how we can do it, if staff can tell me how we can do it, fine. But it is, it is all or nothing with you. And even for you to say to me today, "No, you didn't, ma'am, no, you didn't," wow, wow. It makes me not want to work with you because we talked on the phone after that meeting and I said, "Sheriff, we voted to give you everything and she said yes, you said yes, you did." We spoke on the phone. So, I, I just feel disappointed, but I can't put that into this. I just, are you willing to work with us so that we can afford some kind of COPS grant?
To try to wrap this up, I would say essentially we'll come up with a number and that's yours to manage. And I tried to make everyone comfortable with the COPS grant last year. So, clearly I would still be inclined to do that because it's extra money into the budget. It just has to work within what we can do. We're going to have to raise, raise our budgets across the board, but we also don't want to raise taxes. So, we're going to have to work together to figure this out. And some, when some of the growth money comes online, it'll help start paying for that, so. Does the board have anything further? Thank you.
He, I believe that the grant is time-sensitive to the sheriff. So, I mean, would we not, obviously we don't have his budget in front of us, but could we not give him a number? And he can decide how much goes into the increase of his budget and how much goes into what he feels like he can apply for, for the COPS grant?
I would say that last year, the sticky wicket was that we had to sign. That's what killed it because we were talking about reducing, you got the full amount, you didn't think you would. You got the full number. We were trying to come up with a number that's, I personally tried to shepherd that through to come up with a number that the county could afford. And the sticky wicket was having the commission sign for it. So, I would say, you know, you've heard the numbers floated. We can't, we can't do what you're asking because we don't have the total budget in front of us yet. But you have an idea of what you should and we can always adjust the number later, as you said.
Commissioner Davis, it's a moot point. If your own legal counsel incompetently advises you to not sign the grant in the first place, then why are we here having this discussion? She just said, "Nothing has changed from last year," which we know is a false statement. You were on a conference call, she was on a conference call, Colonel Witt was on a conference call with the Department of Justice. They clearly said it had to be signed by the sheriff and the chief executive officer from the county. That was Commissioner Schleba initially, followed by you. And the COPS grant was not signed. And I told all of you in this room and personally, "I will work with you to help us get this federal money that our taxpayers sent to Washington DC, harvest it, and bring it back down here." But she sat there and advised you not to sign it because you would be personally lying.
Madam Chairman, point of order.
Thank you. We just, we don't attack staff. Thank you.
Well, Sheriff, please, don't leave yet. This, this has been signed in the past, this grant has worked in the past.
I know, you don't have to sell me on it, I tried to get it through last year.
Well, to sign it, I mean, the board chair has signed it, obviously, in the past many times, so I, I mean, but the sheriff-
Commissioner Bayes has not weighed in, but I have heard four of us say that if the budget was appropriate, we would be in favor of signing it. So, perhaps we have a different opinion this year. And that is a board decision, that is not a attorney decision. She can give us advice and we are free to ignore it.
Well, how, how can-
Much to her chagrin.
How can the, how can the sheriff, in a timely manner, submit? If he, if they're working on his current budget right now, that's why I said we should give him a number. So, he knows, "How much can I put towards my regular budget? And how much am I going to write this COPS grant for?" Then he can, then he could bring it to something that you would sign because-
We can't, I'm sorry, we can't give him a number. But, we can adjust, the COPS grant can be adjusted downward. We went through all this last year. If, whatever he applies for, if the number does not cover that, then it can be adjusted downward. Commissioner Kennard, you have something on your mind?
I was just going to say, historically, budgets have increased about 3% to 5% a year. So, there's, there's the budget number.
There's the starting point.
A good, a good number to work with. A reasonable number to work with.
Thank you. Okay, are we done? Anything further? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff, Colonel. Open to the public. If anyone would like to address the board, please fill out a green card, hand it to the clerk. You can do it after you speak if you like. You will have three minutes. If you're registered as a group, you will have five minutes, but you have to let us know that you are representing an official group that's registered with us. All comments are to be directed to the chairman and please state for the record your name and address at the beginning. Thank you. Or at least your city. She's got it. Are you getting five or three at this? Five, okay.
Hi, my name's Bob Rudemiller and I live in Floral City. I'm here to represent Too Far.
I'm hearing some murmuring in the audience. Just so you know, this is like an amphitheater. Any, even murmuring we hear, and it's very distracting when we're trying to pay attention to the speaker. Thank you.
As a preamble to what I want to say, I used to think that industrial process controls was very complex. But what I witnessed today is a lot more complex than industrial process control. And I want to take my hat off to all of you in terms of what you go through and your decisions. And I fully support 16 years for a county commissioner because I believe that it takes more than three years just to learn the ropes. But on a lighter note, if I could change the subject and put a little bit of appreciation in. On behalf of Too Far and the Natural Resource Foundation, we want to thank the county for becoming a co-applicant for the assistance with the permitting process for the Point Lonesome Restoration Project. This is a significant project which will benefit all of the citizens of Citrus County with the expectation of expanding water resources for many years into the future. The permit application has been now filed with the State of Florida Department of Environmental Protection. We're currently awaiting the agency's response, which is expected within the next 30 days. The project is considered Phase 1 of the restoration of Point Lonesome Lake and is projected to increase the water storage capacity to approximately 40 million gallons of fresh water, which will, is less than 1%, it's less than 1% of the entire Sala Apopka Lakes system. If the State of Florida continues to support this effort, it will ultimately result in expanding the water storage capacity of the lakes by 4 billion gallons of fresh, potentially potable water for Citrus County and the citizens. This is equivalent to constructing, and I want you to, I've said this before, but this is equivalent to constructing 54,000 conventional water storage towers. This is not a small project and it's, and we anticipate this going on for a long time into the future. And I want to thank you again for your support in opening up this project. And we, we really look forward to working with the county in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's always good to see you up here.
I have five minutes. I'm Robert Croft.
Which, who are you representing again? Just for the record.
The Citrus County Historical Society.
Thank you, sir.
Y'all need a fairy godmother. After all this today.
We need her wand.
Yes.
Oh, wouldn't I would, yeah.
May is designated as Historic Preservation Month by the National Trust for Historic Preservation. At least one of you have voiced your intent to take over the historic courthouse for your offices, stating that it is empty. This demonstrates your lack of knowledge of what goes on at the Old Courthouse Museum. The old courthouse, the old historic courthouse was built in 1912, but by the 1980s had fallen into disrepair and ruin because your predecessors failed to maintain it. The last straw was when the ceiling fell in on the judge in the courtroom and pigeons were roosting in the clock tower. A group of Citrus Countyans led by the Citrus County Historical Society decided to rescue the building from destruction. Restoration of the building commenced with the help of grants from the State of Florida Department of Historic Preservation. After many years of restoration, which included fundraising, the old historic courthouse became an architectural jewel in downtown Inverness. During this restoration and afterward, the Board of County Commissioners signed covenants with the State of Florida which stipulated the use of the building for historical purposes. They also issued resolutions and proclamations which delineated the use of the building for historical purposes. They also acknowledged the unique relationship between the clerk of the court and the Citrus County Historical Society for maintaining and making available the official records of the county for research. The Old Historic Courthouse Museum is used to, is used to mount exhibitions on a rotating basis, some of which are from the Smithsonian Institution in Washington and other museums and institutions from which exhibits are borrowed. This rotating gallery is underwritten by a grant from the Davis family in La Canto. The Brennan family has underwritten one of the galleries which features items of prehistory. Another gallery details the history of Citrus County. Different community groups such as the Chamber of Commerce, the Inverness Rotary Club, the Daughters of the American Revolution, the African-American Read-In, the Citrus County Leadership Academy, amongst others, use the courtroom for meetings, dinners, and luncheons. The courtroom is used at least once a month for coffee and conversation which features a speaker on pertinent topics, some being used to, related to exhibits in the rotating gallery or of local or historical interest. Musical concerts are held monthly in the courtroom. Twice a month, there are children's programs which are held on Saturdays. We are in the business to save the history of Citrus County and present it to the public. At the present time, we have a dozen trained volunteers who are scanning the original newspapers from Crystal River and Inverness. These newspapers go back to about 1900 and will be available as searchable documents online. We also have trained volunteers who assist clients in their research of deeds and other official records and other historic documents, artifacts, and photographs within our collections. We hold within our collections historical records going back to statehood in 1845. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, please.
Hi, my name is Ken Marot. I'm also serving as vice president of the Citrus County Historical Society. One of the things that I typically do is I research things in response to citizen requests. And I also research and write articles that are in the Chronicle on the weekend section. So, you've probably read some of my stuff. In addition to what Robert has, has said, we've, we're very sensitive to the budget issues that you guys face. And when that clock stopped chiming on the hour over there, we stepped up and paid $7,500 to have that clock fixed. I'm not sure you know that. Over the past years, we've contributed over $24,000 for the replacement of blinds in the historic courthouse, refinishing wood floors, and over $30,000 to address water penetration issues in the museum. As Robert mentioned, we embarked on a project to digitize all of the fragile newspaper documents and, and newspapers and other documents. And we purchased equipment costing over $3,000 to accommodate this task. We also recognized that security needed to be beefed up in the, in the museum. So, we bought a six-camera system with a monitor that allows us to keep track of all the visitors in every room. Cost of $500, we underwrote. Our volunteers have contributed an estimated $2 million worth of in-kind service hours since the museum reopened. And so, we have programs for children, as well as we started outreach to senior citizens living in assisted, assisted living. We have packets that go out to the buckets of, of information about Citrus County history that go to the, to the people in, in assisted living. Our visitors, how do they view the museum? Were consistently rated 9.8 out of 10 on our internal visitor surveys. Tripadvisor and Yelp ratings have us at 4.5 out of, or 4.5 out of 5. And here's some of the comments. "It was all top-notch. Excellent restoration, beauty. The displays are beautiful, very well organized, informative, and visually appealing, especially to me as a native Floridian. You must go. A great little place, filled to the rim with information and displays. Very education, a lot to look at and read. We loved it." Filled to the rim with information, does that sound empty to you? On behalf of the members in, of the Citrus County Historical Society and the citizens who we speak with every day, I'm urging you to respect and honor the solemn oath that your predecessors made years ago about moving, the, about not moving the commissioners into our building. I'm urging you to save our history.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Hello? Hi, my name is Patty Adams. And I'm, this is going to be short and I'll try to be sweet. This is just basic economics. I'm sorry, but when you grow a town, you start off with a foundation and you don't keep growing up and out and not maintain what you have. Now, I'm referring to a lot of things, okay? You're making the city beautiful. I love that, I live in the city. I love the fact that it's beautiful. And I see lots of new growth coming in. But if you don't even have enough law security for the people who live here now, why are you bringing in more people? Don't you, you're gonna, you're gonna make yourselves go bankrupt because you're just growing and growing and not maintaining what you have. There's certain things that have to be maintained. It's just, it's like you and your own home, okay? You bought a home, you keep adding on when you're not fixing the toilet, not fixing the kitchen, not getting new appliances as you need them. You don't just keep adding on and adding on. It looks good to the other people on the outside, but you're hurting the city, the county, when- but you're hurting the city, the county, when you do it that way. Maintain what you have. Security is important. Lots of things are important, okay? But stop trying, you're getting in more people when you can't even really take care of what you have. You're not taking care of the roads. I saw that article in the newspaper that news, the new mail can't even be delivered to a section of Inverness. Why? You let people move there and then you don't help them with the roads? Or why, why do these things happen? You're gonna look very foolish. It's your job, it's your job to think these things out. This didn't just happen the last two, three years, okay? As far as law security, that should be going every year. As the town grows, the number of security that we have should be kept up with it. You can't play catch-up. He's very frustrated because you're, now he's trying to get you to play catch-up. It's not going to happen. It takes better planning. Now stop putting money into new things until you take care of what you've got. Thank you. It wasn't too sweet, was it? I'm sorry.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Carmen Kubitschak, 4512 East Maryland Street, Inverness. And I'm gonna speak to you or ask basically my comments on Inverness Village 4. Since Commissioner Holly Davis is gone, I guess I have to direct my comments to you, Commissioner Bayes. I want to say that I'm really, really disappointed. Commissioner Davis unfortunately has the same face that I put on when I'm disgusted. And I saw her disgust not only during the last meeting, but also on the news, you know? When they were interviewing the residents of Inverness Village 4. The concern that I had, and I think it's something that the other residents have, was the ordinance that didn't get to pass. But it was very, a bitter pill to swallow when we kind of questioned whether or not it was legal, number one. Number two, it was directed specifically to the residents of Inverness Village 4. So we were kind of singled out. The other thing is that although the Public Works Director, who appears to be very knowledgeable, had entertained the idea of containment, it was like a last-hour effort for her to come up with a solution, knowing that she had over a year, the board did, had over a year to kind of come up with a solution when the moratorium was gonna finish, and that didn't happen. But there was never any indication of the cost, whether or not it was gonna be on the low end, on the high end. And it really didn't address the problem. So we're still facing the fact that we don't have an infrastructure, that we don't have a drainage system. I know that you all met, I don't know if it was the board or just Holly Davis that met with Eric Williams to try and come up, brainstorming, maybe come up with a solution. There have been many people who have kind of tried to come up with solutions for our predicament, and unfortunately, nothing was ever done. So we're back to square one. We feel that our taxes are way over what I should be paying when I don't even have roads. And I understand that you want to keep going up on taxes. Well, we don't have an infrastructure. We don't have drainage. It's raining. This is our rainy season, and I, and I expect it to get worse. I do encourage everyone who wants to run for commissioner to take a ride through our neighborhood to see what we're talking about. I think every commissioner needs to get educated on everyone else's district. Thank you.
Stephen Schwartz, Beverly Hills. Commissioners, as we grow and more lighting goes up, a safety hazard is developing. Recently, I was on 44 and as a car dealership, and the bright light as you're driving from west to east was blinding, and somebody almost ran into me. Thank God they didn't. I did get in touch with code enforcement, who did a wonderful job in taking care of the situation. However, I'm noticing that around the community, as we grow, more and more of these security bright LED lights are, are going up on houses, especially on their, over their garage. And the illumination is beyond the property line. And again, it's blinding as you drive through the neighborhoods. I am informed that on the land development, there is a code so that they can correct it, which is what they did there. But there is none for residential. I would appreciate that this board looks into the possibility of setting just like we have noise ordinances, we have light ordinances, even if it means specifying that security lights need to be on motion sensors so that they're not on all night. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Next, please.
Good afternoon. Janet Barrick, Citrus Springs. A week ago Monday, I went to a meeting that lasted about two and a half hours. And one of the things that was talked about was the judges and space needs. And I went home and I thought about a lot of different things. And we have space for the commissioners because the commissioners do not have to be in one room. They do not have to be on one floor. They just have to be in our facilities that we don't need to go rent. All right? I made a couple inquiries. We have the West Citrus Community Center. Commissioners from District 1 and District 2 could each have an office there at no additional cost. We have Citrus Springs Community Center, District 3. No additional costs, no additional electric, no additional water, no additional phone. Everything is there. And we also have East Citrus Community Center for District 4 and District 5 Commissioners. That's three office spaces that we could send the commissioners to within a couple of weeks. Just get our people from the different departments to move your furniture and get you set up. Then you could start working on getting the judges what they need, which is your responsibility, to give them space for the court and space for their office, which is what they asked. You've been kicking this can down the road, and you, not all of you were here, okay? However, this thing has been going down the road and down the road and down the road, and the road has come to an end. The judges are here. The road has ended. You have to have space for them. You need to provide it. It's not hard to see what space can be. You don't need to rent someplace. You don't need a consultant to go out and spend money to find you a space. The county has buildings. They have facilities, and they are paid for facilities. They are maintained by our property taxes already. Thinking outside the box was not hard for me. And if you think about it, there are other buildings that you may want to use, but those are the three that I'm suggesting. You would be in your district. Your people could come to you and see you. You're supposed to be representing the people. Why not be in your district where they can find you? Other than that, have a wonderful afternoon.
I'm Citrus County Sheriff Mike Pendergast. I'm speaking on behalf of the 230 sworn law enforcement officers in the Citrus County Sheriff's Office today. All of you commissioners are strategic planners who inherited a similar situation to me when you took office. Our roads in Citrus County had not been paved and properly funded for years, perhaps even decades, especially when you ride around some parts of the older parts of the county. And the remainder of the county's infrastructure was calmly right before your eyes as it continues to do so. So too had deputies been long-promised market-dictated pay raises that your predecessors voted for years ago, and then during my first year in office tried to deny and even feigned amnesia about those promised pay raises when I took office. That was a fight I gladly stood for for those deputies who risked their lives and run towards the sounds of gunfire far too often. Just getting to the original promised pay raises was not enough. The State of Florida reset the minimum standard for law enforcement professionals based upon the market and also added signing bonuses and long overdue higher starting salaries. Consequently, local sheriff's office had to increase their own wages, not just because it was the right thing to do, but also to have any chance whatsoever to recruit and retain the highly qualified professionals that we need in modern law enforcement agencies today. Deputies have now seen competitive pay increases since I took office, and we've seen that mission completed in recruiting and retaining highly qualified professionals. But perhaps the largest line item expense in the wake of COVID was the population explosion that Citrus County experienced. We now have a population well north of 171,000, and we've eclipsed the predictions for 2030 with more and more residents coming every single day. That means our sworn law enforcement staff has to continue to grow to meet the everyday challenges of keeping our citizens and our commercial enterprises safe. That way, our community can, can thrive under the current conditions and be prepared for the future. Increasing our sworn law enforcement staff has been my top priority for more than three years. I've filled, in fact, the vacant positions as requested back in 2022, and we had a line out the door. I applied for the federal grants as requested by two county administrators now and two separate boards. And I'll continue to fight for what's right in preparing us to meet the present demands of our current 171,000 souls that we're responsible for protecting, along with the more than 1.65 million tourists who annually visit our beautiful county. The mere suggestion of an MSTU sends the exact wrong message at this critical juncture in our county's history. It's a continuation of a nickel-and-dime culture we've seen submissives employ and previous boards of county commissioners use as a tactic to underfund absolutely needed essential services. A 3% fee for paying with a card, new requests for tipping on nearly everything, and now government wants to tax for individual services such as stormwater collection and law enforcement. Some of you don't like me personally, and some of you are actually backing candidates that are trying to run against me. You don't like me because I speak the truth, and I stand up for what I believe in and for what is right. I understand that, and I don't lose any sleep over it because I honor my oath of office. I've been very, very critical of the commission's timidness towards funding more deputy positions because my words and deeds are in sync. I'm not denying that, and the chronic lack of action is not only negligent, but it can be deadly, and we've seen it happen on too many streets in America today. The most important lesson I learned from enlisting as a private when I was 21 years old to retiring as a combat decorated colonel was that leadership is the difference between doing the right thing and saying what others want to hear. Citrus County is growing at an accelerated rate, and I've shown you the graph at how significant it is. And our law enforcement needs to remain mission-focused and capable of delivering those essential services to our citizens. I will always prioritize public safety for our citizens and our businesses, as well as prioritize the safety of our men and women in uniform who run towards the sound of gunfire and cries for help. That should be the priority for all six of us that are elected officials in this office, in this board meeting room today. In other words, it's not what you, it's what you do that counts. It's not what you say you will do at the end of the day. But leadership and representation is about setting aside personal feelings to do what is right. Even someone on the board suggested that today. The role of government is to keep its citizens safe, and therefore, public safety cannot be an afterthought and a different taxing authority separate from the general fund. Our residents depend upon us to do the right thing. So let me bottom line my thoughts for you regarding the discussion about an MSTU for law enforcement. The mere suggestion to create an MSTU for law enforcement is a deliberate, misguided, and undisguised or more aptly labeled inaction design to do one thing, and that's to defund police.
Are you done? Alrighty. Okay, we're gonna, no, no further open to the public? All right, we'll close. Open to the public? Commissioners? Yes?
Well, I will say, given the sheriff was the last one to speak, I'll start off there. And again, reiterate, we don't fund deputy positions. He does. We fund the sheriff's office. What he does with his money is completely up to the sheriff. We have never defunded any law enforcement. In fact, we've increased that budget substantially every single year. So the grandstanding up at the podium doesn't do anything to move the needle forward. We need to have a much better cooperation than, than what we have right now, and hopefully we can. So, For Too Far, great project. I'm excited to see it get underway. And I would agree with the two folks that came up from the Historical Society. We absolutely should not be in the, in the old courthouse. We can find places for our offices. We do not need to be in the community centers. I personally don't care where my office is at. I can meet anyone anywhere. But I do understand some security concerns from my colleagues. Those community centers do not offer a security for them meeting with individuals that they have absolutely no idea who they're sitting down at a table with. So I don't think those, Janet, I appreciate your, your effort there, but I don't think those are, those are good options. There are options, but I don't think those are good ones. That's all.
Thank you. Who wants to go next? Commissioner Fennington?
For the Historical Society, thank you for the presentation. I grew up from, well, my whole life looking at that building and loving that courthouse. So people in this area do, it's a treasure and a gift that we have, and thank you for taking care of it. I actually used to, when we would drive by it when I was very tiny, tiny, I used to dream that was my house or my castle, you know, like little girls do. That being said, also, when I was much younger than I am now, the courthouse was renovated, and they put the new clock tower on it. And my pet peeve even all those years ago was instead of leaving that beautiful, new, shiny, copper clock, they decided to make it look old and unkept. I don't know if people will agree with that or not, but I would love to see it all shiny. No, okay, so you don't like that. So we're gonna agree to disagree on that. You agree? We'll talk later. Anyway, at the end of the day, you guys are doing great things for that building, and I just want to thank you. Janet, thank you for the idea. I do understand some of what Commissioner Kennard said, but if they want to start renovating, I've got my bags packed, so I'm ready, I'm ready to go. And I think that's all I should probably comment on at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Bayes?
To Mr. Croft and Ken on the Historical Society, thank you very much. I think you'd be pleased to know today that this board pretty much agreed that we're gonna make an additional investment of about $750,000 into that courthouse, which is long overdue. It is one of our prized possessions here in Citrus County. And what you may or may not know is that when the DeVal Metz House was founded and put into the trust, that was something I was very engaged in and worked with the historical group in Floral City. So it's near and dear to my heart. Bob, again, Too Far, thank you for what you've done. I'm so excited to get this project started and moving along and see what else, what good that's going to bring to our county. And as far as an MSTU, I absolutely agree with an MSTU. I think it is exactly what is needed. I don't think that ad lorm funding of everything that's needed in, in the county is going to cut the muster. We know that what is going on in Tallahassee, the exemptions that are being put onto local governments, we have got to find a way that we're going to fund all these resources. And given one of the primary duties of, of county government is public safety, I think an MSTU is exactly what is needed because you can have your own 10 mil cap. We can reduce the ad lorm mil- ad valorem millage by that baseline. If it's 40 million today and we add 5% to it, but anything that goes over and above and beyond, if it just keeps growing, then you have the opportunity to go out and talk to your citizens. If that's what they say they want to spend their money on, then by all means, and you get to see the millage of what it's going to cost to fund your sheriff. And if you like that millage, God bless you. But I look at it and I think we've got to separate out that budget line so that people can see exactly what it's costing them. If we did this number, I asked for the millage rate, if we funded it, we don't have enough mills. We have a 10 mil cap and we don't have enough mills in this to fully fund that COPS grant and what it would take. It's 20, almost 28 million, I believe, at the end of five years and that doesn't include the current budget or the increases every year thereon. So if, if you, if that's what the citizens want, they can determine that's what they want and they're willing to pay for it, then it should be on that MSTU and you see it. It's not something then that the, the Board of County Commissioners, you hear us telling them no, because we're trying to look out for the benefit of the citizens and their taxpayer dollars. So I am absolutely 100% all on board with an MSTU and if you want to ask me about it, talk to me about it, I'll give you all the information I know. But I 100% am in agreement with it and have led the charge on it and I think it's the right thing to do.
Thank you. Commissioner Schlebaugh?
Thank you. Did Mr. Croft leave?
Yes.
Okay, could you, is it Ken?
Yes.
Okay. I want to say, first of all, I appreciate you all coming and Mr. Croft was too polite to say my name, that I was the one that had the idea of doing that. And I don't think what you understood of me not communicating it properly is, I'm a Mayflower descendant, Jamestown DAR member, I'm a history buff. That is a jewel that we have and thank you for, for refurbishing it, keeping it up. What I said wasn't used was two times a month the courthouse. And could we, instead of putting millions of dollars into the Coke building, let's put it into that jewel and then utilize it. It evidently, it's not a good idea that you guys don't like. I was just trying to get more money into a jewel that we have. And if it doesn't go anywhere, it doesn't go anywhere, but that's what I was saying wasn't used. And, and Mr. Croft did say that, you know, once a month such and such uses it, but two times a month we would need the courthouse. And there are three offices, I've spent a lot of time in that building and in fact, Kathy Turner Thompson is a DAR sister of mine, I've spent a lot of time in there and that's what I was trying to accomplish. How do we get this jewel? We have to invest in it anyway, but then if we could also use it for the county commission meetings and perhaps have an office there, we have to have, Janet had the idea of, you know, commissioners being in other, in their district, but we, we are bound, or we have to have, not our offices, but we have to have a footprint in, in Inverness. I know we ran the line to LGB, so we could have offices at LGB. I was just trying to get that, but if you don't like it, you don't like it, it was just an idea I had. I do think that we could look into it and maybe put some more money into it to, to meet there at the historical building. Ms. Adams, I love your spunk, I love that you came here. We can't stop people from coming, believe me, I'm a native Floridian. I wish we'd shut the gates a long time ago, but we can't. So we're trying to take care of what we have, but we also can't stop the new growth. They're coming. Florida was open and it's open and we said, come on down and they're coming down. So thank you for coming though and taking the time to, to speak to us. Steve Schwartz, the lights, they can, I wanted to see the, the northern lights, we had an opportunity to see him the other night when I was in Atlanta, I couldn't see anything because of all the lights. So I agree with you, the, the, the light pollution, especially LEDs, maybe that is something that code, that we could look at at our code enforcement to see if there's a level that we could stop it. And as far as the sheriff, he left, he said what he had to say, but we do not defund the police. We've never taken money away from the sheriff's office, we've increased it every year. So I think that statement was not very nice. So, thank you.
I think the word you were looking for was preposterous.
That's your word? I was thinking it's not very nice.
Bob? Sorry it took us so long, but very glad that we were able to get Too Far moving along with that permit. Ken, love your articles in the Chronicle, big fan of everything that y'all do at the courthouse, so thank you very much, I appreciate it. As far as what the sheriff said, you know, when he started talking about getting the sheriff's deputies up to where they could compete with the state level salaries, I was, I was waiting for it because we were talking about teamwork, I was waiting for it to say, and this commission, you know, some of the commissioners up here, because I believe we funded it on the last commission even, we gave, we increased the budget for him to actually pay competitive wages and I was waiting for him to give us credit for that and he did not. So I find that to be disappointing. And with that, let's move on. Where are we, team? Are we on E?
Motion we approve item E1A through O.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Finnegan and any public comment? By the way, y'all, I'm gonna be speedy, so you better be doggone quick if you've got anything to say, all right?
It's gonna be fast.
I'm not talking to you. You get your three minutes, but we'd appreciate it, move on.
No, no, Citrus Springs, I, I think it's good that you're gonna prove this, however, I would love to see more of the items done. F and G were similar items, they were next to each other, okay? But I, K and N are similar items. It would make it so much easier if you put I, K and N right in a row, I, J and K, so you could see that it was a this, a this and, you know, all three of them had to do a termination and rebidding. And to me, it makes sense to put items that are the same next to each other. So as you're reading through it, it actually follows. That's the only comment I had.
Thank you. Any board comment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E2, second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Schlebaugh, I'm just gonna call it whatever. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E3, second.
Motion by Commissioner Schlebaugh, second by Commissioner Finnegan, is there any public comment? Seeing none, is there any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E4A and B.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schlebaugh, second by Commissioner Kennard, is there any public comment? Seeing none, is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E5A and B.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Schlebaugh, is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E6A and B.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Kennard, is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E7ABC.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schlebaugh, second by Commissioner Finnegan, is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E8.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Kennard, is there any public comment? Any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Baze, it's up to you.
Motion to deny E9.
I'll second it for discussion, I want to hear what the...
What the rub is?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, motion, motion to deny by Commissioner Finnegan, a second by Commissioner Kennard. Any public comment? Board discussion? Take it away.
Okay, so I looked at that and it is a smaller sign, but what they get for signs now, that smaller sign, I'm not sure what the rate is, I'm gonna guess 1,200 to 1,500 a month, could, could be more than that. I think that I'm, I'm being lenient on, on that, but 650 a year, that, they're, they're making a lot of money off that sign and I just feel like we could negotiate a little better, especially when they can just keep redoing it at the 650 rate every year. And I mentioned that to Marcelo, if we deny it now, he's going back and checking on that. I don't know that he's ready today and I don't know that it's important today, but I don't see Marcelo.
He's in the back room.
Marcelo.
Did you really just do that?
See, it works. Call his name and he appears. Is that okay, Mr. Howard? Thank you. Marcelo, I didn't expect you to work a miracle since yesterday, but...
I haven't, I got a quick email from Walt in TST, so I want to follow up, do a little digging on some of the other signage out there, so I'm looking into it, I'll get you an answer as soon as possible.
Okay. I, I think that we could do a little better, that's why I voted to deny and give him a chance to vet that and see if we could do a little better.
And if all of us vote to deny, then it can just automatically come back because we're all on the winning side, correct?
Yes, or you can, right, you dispense with this motion and then someone would move to table it until the next meeting.
That sounds good.
Okay.
So if I rescind my second?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I can rescind the motion. Thank you, sir.
Then I would make a motion that we table this until the next meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Schlebaugh to table. Is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those...
Ma'am, sorry.
I told you I was moving fast.
Yes, it's just, it's just not often that you all are owners of billboards, you came to own this through condemnation, so I don't know how many billboards we actually own, so I think that's one of the issues.
We should get the one right, shouldn't we?
I, I don't know how many we own, but...
I don't know how much staff time we'll end up burning getting another couple hundred bucks a month, but, you know.
Probably not that much.
But like you said, if it goes in perpetuity, it's better to...
Go right the first time.
Level set it the first time, right?
Yeah, when they're, when they're renting them for eight, 900 bucks a month.
That was 10 years ago.
Yeah, and we're getting 650 for the year? Good point.
Yep. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E10A through G.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, a second by Commissioner Kennard, is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E11, second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Kennard, is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E12.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Finnegan, is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E13.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Kennard, is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion?
Yes, I just want to say, good job, Ken, it's 75% of this is grant money and he just is very good at that part of his job, thank you.
Nice, and nice job being quick. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E14A through C.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Kennard, is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now we're gonna slow down.
How do you want to tackle that?
Well, unfortunately, our workshop got a little truncated this morning, so I think let's do a quick consensus. Is there anything that you want to pull or do we want to approve all 20? Or that would be the fastest, is if there's anything that we want to discuss separately that you may not be, that you are questioning whether you'd be in favor.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not questioning if I'm in favor of it, like, just, I had asked staff about number two, I'm, I'm for doing that, but obviously at some point it's gonna come back to how we're paying for it. So I think this is more working towards a goal and writing it, writing it in when they're, you know, looking at documents, but I, I don't know if by saying E152 is a budget approval or if it's just, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna add this position and then try to fund it later, I just want to make that clear.
Well, I would, I would like to, well, we could just start off with, does anyone make, want to make a motion so we can discuss this or do we want to pull a couple to make a motion? Because I do want to make a comment on seven and nine and then of course we are gonna do open to the public and there may be some folks chiming in on that.
Well, number eight's an additional position as well.
Yeah. So two and eight are additional positions. To my mind, seven and nine go hand in hand because if the county assumes all the airport leases, then for the, we're taking money out of the pockets of the FBOs and so we would have to negotiate the leases, I, because we can't hurt them financially that way. So in my discussion with Marcelo, he said this is all visioning longer term, this isn't happening tomorrow. You know, so that's, that's the only thing that got me comfortable with those two.
Madam Chair?
Yes. You gonna make a motion so we can keep talking about it?
Well, if you'll give me one minute to ask a question.
Sure.
I think it's imperative that we have legal counsel that has FAA experience. That's nothing against you, but I want, I want somebody that actually knows the regulations...
Aviation law.
Because I think that's very important. After some of the stuff that I looked at, discovered today, I, I'm a little concerned on how we're doing business and I think that we need that legal counsel that has that FAA experience.
Well, do we want to, I'm sorry...
I'm not sure if that needs to be added into this and we, and we add it and then agree to add it or how you want to go about it, but that's, that is something that I think is very important.
Madam Attorney, did you want to say something before Commissioner Kennard?
I, I would like to say something, I don't know what, okay. I think that if you, when you look at everything y'all heard this morning, when you take a comprehensive look at all of the documentation, the FBO leases, the individual leases, the ground leases, I think that if you had counsel that was dedicated to just the airport and could comprehensively draft a set of documents that would encompass all of those things, it would absolutely be to your benefit. I mean, I used to fix airplanes for a living and I am a lawyer, but I don't specialize in aviation law, so the difficulty that, you know, the land section has, that your staff has, that I have, is that there are existing documents and you are gonna have to try to get those all on the same calendar, which is going to be very difficult to try to come up with a comprehensive solution. But it can certainly be done and I think it would be great to have, if, if y'all could afford it, to have an attorney that could put that all together for you, you know, specialize in just that, that area. If you could afford it, that's gonna be the issue.
Can you say further what you mean by put everything on the same calendar?
Well, you, you know, you've got a couple ground leases out there. You have some that are old, you have some that, you know, you know, we had, I don't even know the status of the one that we were working on, but I know you have two and I think there was a third that was coming and I don't even know if you did the third one, honestly, I don't remember. So when you look at, I think, looking at the slides this morning, Inverness and Crystal River, the timeline and the FBOs are off and then, you know, the issue of who's gonna handle the leases, like you just mentioned, that's within the FBO lease. So you've got a bunch of pieces that you kind of have to all get comprehensive together because you can't change one if you have others that are already existing. So you may have to try to negotiate with some of the people and say, hey, you know, can we cut this lease short? Can we extend this lease? Can we extend this... You know, can we cut this lease short, can we extend this lease, can we extend this FBO, can we, you know, remove some years from the FBO? You're gonna have to have somebody get in there and you got, you know, you got a lot of work to do, based on this report. And the inconsistencies in the different documents.
So. Go ahead, Commissioner Kennard.
My suggestion would be, why don't we table this, there's a lot in this E fifteen.
Yes.
Let's come back with an agenda item that has a cost estimate. For getting a a an attorney that specializes in this stuff, then we can vote on that. When that attorney, then that attorney can sit down and put all this stuff together and say, this is what I would recommend to get. Both of your airports going in the same direction, all your leases in order, then we would be in a much better situation. To vote on these things either one at a time, or the whole package, when you know, that he or she would bring back to us. You know, if we vote on this stuff, then they've got maybe potentially more of a of a hodge hodge to deal with. And unravel uh before they bring a package forward to us.
It feels to me like this is kind of conceptual at this point, because it doesn't have budget numbers attached, so Commissioner Baze.
Let let her go first and then I'll say.
I I while I appreciate what Commissioner Kennard is saying, no lawyer is gonna be able to untangle. These various documents until the board comes up with the policy direction. Once you all tell who met, you know, the lawyer, the FBOs, the leaseholders. Once you all come up with the policy, then the lawyer can put it in words, but I thi- I think you guys have have to set some policy first.
Commissioner Baze?
Well, I think there's a a couple of things that we can absolutely give direction on um. Number one, I think uh we need to have somebody at the airport, we need to have pe-. Two representatives, or at least we need to take Todd initially, and he needs to break his week up. And he needs to have an office at each one of those airports, he doesn't need to be in the LGB building, he needs to be on the ground, he needs to be. Knowing what's going on on those airports and and meeting people as they come in, because that's that's our responsibility to sell. That business, but what what we want out of it, to me, we can vote on that um. Number two, the financial um analysis, I think that we can make a decision today on that. I think we need to break the finances out, um that way we were allocating by line item, everything that's going on in that airport. We know what dollars are coming in and what dollars are going out, and who's working on it, and I think that is something that we can implement now as well. Um because we've gotta get a handle on the finances. I mean, there it's it's pointless if we don't, if we don't know financially, we're running a business that we have, we have no balance sheet on. So the, I mean, those are two, and then I, you know, I think, I'm not sure that we're prepared to sit here and make um policy today. Because I I I think we still have. Some conversation to have probably between. Uh Mr. Howard and board members to kinda come up with a guiding policy document um to bring back. But I would, I would like to have a vote to have Todd at the airport, and I would like to have a vote on. Um breaking out the financials for these airports. And I think then we can have discussion and come back and find out about the rest.
Madam Chair?
I wanted, may I ask Mr. Howard first? Can you weigh in on this, is there, what's time sensitive, do you believe everything in here is the right way to go?
Well, it's up to you all, but I mean, there's a, there's a lot there, this is a lot, this is a comprehensive uh.
It didn't help that our workshop.
Is that, you know, I had a good discussion with the Chair of the Aviation Board, and to think that with all these items that are on there. How close they came together with uh thinking there's a lot of good stuff in here, so I think there could be a little more work to go. Um but I'm pleased with everybody trying to come together, do what's in the best interest of, you know, Citrus, but we're, I think we're very close on a lot of these things. Some of this is gonna take more work, even like what the county attorney said, um it is complex FAA, I think there's some other opportunities uh. On the environmental side with FAA expertise and things like that, that's just a specialty, um so I think that's really good if the board needs to do that. If you're gonna take these airports to the next level and actually go to a different trajectory, um so, but I think there's a lot here, you know, to try to to go into. Um but there's a lot of, like, a lot of this is aspirational, some of it is, you're enhancing, there's policies. Um but I concur, we need to have some, somebody at the airports, we're gonna work through that, I didn't wanna do anything until after this discussion happened here today.
Is there anything on here that you believe is time sensitive, or should we each individually have meetings with you prior to a future very soon? Board meeting where we end up voting?
Uh I think, you know, we have time, but I think some of the things that Commissioner Baze Baze has indicated, uh we probably need some. We can move forward now on some of these, some of these issues are.
Yeah, we, he doesn't need our approval to move a county employee somewhere, because he.
Some of those things.
He runs staff, so um I think conceptually I'm on board with that, sounds like the rest of us are, is anyone not on board with that?
Well, I I wanted to hear what Commissioner Kennard had to say about that.
I didn't think it was our say, I felt like it was his say.
That's what I just said.
I'm not opposed to it, if that's what he wants to do with his staff member.
That's what I'm saying.
You know, if he wants to put him out in utilities building, that's his staff member.
I was just when I brought that up this morning.
Closet.
I don't think it's our position to direct him where where his staff needs to be.
I may wanna go out there, I'll give you my office, that might be be good.
I wouldn't mind taking an office out there, actually.
There we go.
So that's. To Commissioner Baze's point about some things happening today, there are a couple of things on here, I don't know if we wanna pull out, obviously the policy stuff. If we get an attorney, we're gonna need the attorney to do that, but like, number one, I don't even know if we need to put on that pursuing grants. Uh for economic development improvements, obviously, we could, I I think we would agree to do that. Um number four, do we wanna go ahead and get those updated appraisals, I don't need, I don't know the timeline on that, you know, do we? Is that something that we need to do now?
Bring that forward to you anyways, cause it's gonna be, you know, it's an it's an F-bomb funding, so we're gonna bring that to you and, you know, we could definitely. If there's a consensus, we could begin that process of working through that to bring that to you.
That that's what, that's what I was saying, are there a few things that you wanna pull out to have us talk about, like, yes, go ahead and get the.
Yeah.
The amounts for the appraisals, yes, please go ahead and still pursue grants, is there anything on this list that that you all say that we need to tackle?
More like a cons- a conceptual consensus kind of discussion right now, cause there's a lot of things that he, like, he just said, he can go forward.
Right.
Yeah.
And I'll put him in the budget.
Does anyone have a a problem with anything on here from a conceptual standpoint?
Uh yeah, can.
Yeah, you're next, go ahead.
Okay, first of all, thank you for this presentation. I am disappointed, I think we needed probably four hours, I don't understand why it was scheduled today and. Today only, I think it could have been on another day, um you didn't even get to touch on policy. We, you were so rushed through, I don't know, I am not pointing any fingers at staff, because they just do the schedule. But that that is very disappointing to me, that we had to rush through, I don't even know why. Um I don't know how it ended up that way, because I had a whole list of things that I wanted to talk to you about, Daniel, and I didn't even get to. So to say now, oh, let's pick through. My head is full, I have so many questions, and that, this is too important to rush through what what we did.
Yes.
And I'm sorry that that you were rushed through like that, um had a few choice words to say back there, why, how that was handled. Um but as far as tabling this, and um I think that number two, I wouldn't support right now. I wouldn't support number eight, I have a few checkmarks, but again, it's just piecemeal, how can we do this properly? Um so. I I'm I'm not gonna vote to approve this today, because again, none of my questions are answered.
Yeah, we could have another work session too, nothing would stop that from another one.
Maybe not on a board day?
Yes, yeah.
Absolutely.
So we don't have time pressures, I am so sorry, I think you guys have come to our county a million times already, so.
This is important.
It is a nice place, we can set up a manatee tour for you, Commissioner Baze?
But I would like consensus from this board today to start moving forward on some of these, because there's, the longer we prolong this. I mean, it's just like we just keep kicking the can and kicking the can, I mean, I've been going to aviation boards meetings since the beginning of the year, and I feel like. We're on the hamster wheel. You know, if if we're in agreement, and and Mr. Howard wants to do that. To put Todd out there, can we at least start working towards getting the financial separated out of just. So that we know what we're dealing with.
We can work on a staff level, we can, we can work on that.
I think we, he already addressed that, a lot of this, he can move forward on on his own.
Motion or just consensus?
Well, I don't know, that's what I wanna know, I don't wanna walk away from here and say, well, we're gonna bring, we're gonna bring it back again, and we're back to the same thing, talking. We, it it's no more talk, talk, talk.
Make a motion.
Do something.
Are we moving?
Well, we can talk, 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 and I can ask my questions, they get some answers, they're here, let's talk, 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 I mean, let's not do it halfway.
Well, I just think there's things that we can make action on today, without, there's other things we gotta do, but I think there's some things that we can say. We wanna go forward with getting our um. Appraisal. And we wanna separate out our finances out of the general fund, you know, have it stand on its own, and get somebody out there that are meeting and greeting people. That could potentially be clients, so those are things to me that are important, I think we can do some of it, I absolutely agree, we gotta. We do have to have more talk about it, but I'm ready to get going on some of it.
Then make a motion on what you want to go forward today, and we'll see if we, and, cause I've gotta do open to the public too.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we um move forward with item number four, and that we move forward with. Oh god, what number was it now, for getting the um. Where's it at?
One's easy, one's easy.
So we can do one. Where's the um? Three and four? Yep.
I think you're looking at three.
Yeah.
Three and four.
Mm-hmm.
Um where is? Oh my god, you guys got me so worked up now.
Well, talk, talk, talk. It's number seven. The appraisals?
Yes, number seven.
There you go.
Thank you.
But that also includes renegotiating FBO leases.
If you're gonna renegotiate.
I just want the, I just want the appraisal, I want the appraisal on the, on the Inverness Airport.
Um enhance financial performance by renegotiating, well, Commissioner Davis, if I may, go out of order here. You said yourself that we need to have the leases, either all of Citrus County or the FBOs.
Yes.
And at this point, I think that. We need to look at that, I said a year ago, last summer, that what our market rate was, and what we were leasing those. Hangars out for was way below market value, and I think I said it the year before, and didn't, nobody listened. And the expert clearly said, we're below market value, if we're below on a billboard, we're definitely below on a hangar leases.
Wait, wait.
Uh I saw the floor?
Yeah.
So. If you want to take out the the um financial perfor- performance. By renegotiating the fix fixed FBO's oper- operator leases to approach fair market value, then why are we having an appraisal?
Cause we need to know what the value of our asset.
But if we're not gonna handle all the leases.
Well, we're going to though. I I mean, here's what we found out today, we found out today that somebody built hangars. Instead of waiting for the thirty years, the end of the thirty years, we took possession of them, it should be the opposite.
Okay.
There's no need to renegotiate the fixed base operator leases if the fair market value shows that it's fine. That's my point, is that those two things should be separate, we do the appraisal, then we determine, so it's three separate things, it's appraisal of the properties. It is a decision, a policy decision, whether the county does the leases, or the FBOs do the leases. Those two different data points inform what the lease would be with the FBOs, because they need to make. You know, we both need to prosper, both the county and the county taxpayers and the FBOs. Otherwise, they won't be there in in business.
I'm out of order, this is Commissioner, what's your name, Commissioner Baze? She is making a motion, but what I'm saying is, should we as a county, if we're not gonna take back those leases, put out money to do an appraisal?
Can our, our, can we have our consultant come up?
Yeah, come on, Daniel.
There is not enough caffeine in the world for today.
Just keep on rolling. Good afternoon, Daniel Ossie with Infrastructure Consulting Engineering, um there are two items, uh number one, s- solely just the appraisal is item number four. And the thought there, yes, it's a a tool, and renegotiation with your FBOs when that comes time. However, that's four years away, in our presentation, it was solely for that.
Okay.
Uh we would wait for the appraisal, however, you know, that there's a land lease coming up, um you build a corporate hangar. So each of those will be assessed a a value, and so if you stay with what you currently have, seventeen cents a square foot. Um that's based on old appraisal data, so that's the recommendation, is get them now, and.
On both airports or just Inverness?
On both.
Both?
Yeah, the the standard is about every five years, and so you're approaching eight, nine years.
The issue is, is that because we have been trying to get a handle on the airports for the last year. Um we are developing a reputation for not being very quick with our hang, you know, people wanna build hangars and so forth. So we really can't keep dilly-dallying, but I also hear you, if we're at, you know, half of what market rate is, that's not wise either. So unbundling this would be helpful, where we can do some early action items and get to Commissioner Baze's point, get the show on the road. Some of it.
What would be your recommendation off of this list that we absolutely walk away and act, say we're gonna move forward with?
Um step one is to do it right, and set a, set a path to establish the legacy, and making sure that you. You wisely spend taxpayers' money, and you're not subsidizing a private company to operate. It has to be a balance, and so making sure that when you go through these items, I don't think any of them are critical today, that if you don't pass it. Vote on it, um I I think it would be good to have the appraisal done, um I think you, every day you're. You're losing opportunities, um but outside of that, I thi- I think you can make a case for each one of them, that they're equally important. Right, from hiring staff to establishing, you know, are you going to accept grants, cause there's some airports where say, hey, we don't wanna be bound by the obligations anymore. We wanna be unencumbered by FAA policy. But each of them have impacts, long term. So. Completely okay to to break them up and to put them, initially in our presentation, there were five goals. Under each of those goals were bullet points, those bullet points became these action items.
I was gonna say, what happened to five?
Well, there were multiple.
Bullets, yeah, I get it, yeah, I get it.
In in my history, if I were to give you goal number one, well, that's not a consent item, let me break out this part, and I wanna make a motion on that. And it ends up being coming the same thing, it 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 does seem daunting when you've got twenty of them.
Seems to me like we could, Commissioner Baze, if I may be so bold, one, three, and four, maybe the most time sensitive ones, just to get those rolling.
And policy is important to me.
Which number?
Well, he's, I I just trying to do it fast, there's one, two, three, four, five. Six, and I can't, so.
But I.
I don't think we can do policy though, until we have legal advice, that's the issue.
Okay.
On a lot of it.
So what's your motion, Commissioner Baze?
I'd like to make a motion that we um ask staff to move forward with number one, three, and four.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Baze, second by Commissioner Davis. Mr. Howard? Speak now or forever hold your peace. Is there anything on this list that you want to be voted for today?
I mean, the subject matter experts, um I fly a plane inside the plane, but I don't actually pilot the plane, so I'm gonna look to subject matter experts, we spent money on.
By the way, pilots are also inside the plane, just saying.
That's a good point, I hope.
Is there anything on there, you already said nothing was super time sensitive, would that be the three to pull out to move forward?
Yes, uh number three is very important, the sooner you do that, I think sooner you could answer a host of questions that were given today of. What are our costs, we don't know, um so three will, and as Mr. Howard indicated, you know, work internally with staff to get that. Get that going, so that seems like that could be done. The appraisal, I advocated for that. And, uh, number, number one, that's good to.
It's an easy one, keep doing grants, that's, that's low-hanging fruit.
Anything on the second page?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner, um, can you let Madam Attorney go first? She had her hand up.
I mean.
Might inform.
So my question is, uh, for I, if I can ask a question of our consultant. So when you say the appraisal, is that gonna give us an appraisal on, on the real property and als- as well as what would be fair market for rents?
Yes.
Okay, so that's gonna encompass those. So would you also like commissioners to add to the motion or maybe a next motion for us to start finding you legal counsel and getting prices and, and, and doing that kind of stuff? That might be something, because if you are gonna, like, for, for example, renegotiating the FBO leases requires that there be two willing parties. So you, you may not be able to renegotiate if the other parties aren't willing to, to negotiate, but I definitely think you need to have counsel on board if you're gonna be renegotiating. So I can start doing the legwork, at least getting some names of some lawyers who, who do this kind of stuff and bring it back to you.
Well, would you recommend, um, doing a second motion or just tagging it on, amending this one?
However y'all want it, it doesn't matter to me.
Commissioner Kennard?
In looking through this, um, does it hurt anything to start on ten, eleven, and twelve? I mean, that's kind of high-level stuff that isn't gonna happen in the next month or two, but at least gets. That ball rolling, if you will.
I mean, you could end up adding all the policy ones, basically thirteen and fourteen as well.
If I were to table any, it would be anything related to finances or rates and charges, leasing policy, but rules and regulations, it's a pretty standard document. Hello, um, I. May wait on anything dealing with financials and as it impacts current leaseholders. Um, rules and regulations, you should already have that, it's pretty standard. And, um, I don't think there's very much, it's the implications or, you know, what happens if you break a rule. But that would then be updated in everybody's lease anyway, so at least establish the policy of what those rules and regulations are. And therein, uh, you know, thereafter, each lease that you develop would reference it, and then you would have to go back, uh, to current leases and update that.
So ten through fourteen then would all be non-financial?
I know number thirteen's already underway and I've had discussions with the chair, maybe they're already working that.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're already, yeah.
Thirteen, thirteen's done.
Fifteen through twenty is economic development, isn't it?
Yeah, fifteen is a marketing plan, we really didn't get a chance to discuss that, is, uh, your property is almost ready and working either with a developer, um, you know, marketing company. Not necessarily us, um, that will be able to attract, you know, local, but also statewide, national businesses that could establish their operation there.
Do we need to have the financial, the, the appraisal before we do that, so we know what we're doing?
Hmm, depends on, yeah, yeah, well, you would, depending on what the process you undertake, if it's, you're going to use an existing on-call service to facilitate the marketing plan or if you had to put it out on the street for solicitation. Yeah, you could phase it, you could do the appraisal first. Again, there's really.
We're looking, you're the expert, we're looking for, to you for advice on the steps and how to get there.
Understand. Um, I think the ones that you made a motion on one, three, and four are appropriate. Mr. Kennard, I think if you look at the rules and regulations, minimum design, construction, and safety standards. I think that's, um.
What number?
Number eleven.
Yeah, ten, ten through fourteen, I'm, I'm sort of seeing what your bullets were under the five. So ten through fourteen was subject number four was policy, and subject number five was economic development. Yeah, so. So, um.
So I think one, three, four, ten, ten through fourteen.
I'm sorry.
Eleven, if we're looking at construction, you know, you're talking about the leases, those ground leases. Which I don't, I don't know.
Airport rules, regulations, policy manuals, and SOP, there's no construction.
Design construct, eleven, I think he said eleven, didn't he? Reviewing into many minimum design, construction, and safety standards. Design and construction fall into those corporate hangars.
Right.
But these would be for future leases.
Right.
Then you, I mean, you could certainly go back and look at things, see if there's two willing parties to negotiate, to try and implement into current leases.
I think somebody mentioned this existing one that's still out there.
Okay.
So I, 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 I can't remember which of the commissioners said it, but it was.
I think it was me, that we.
We have some that are hanging out there.
Yes.
So.
We're giving a bad reputation for not moving.
That's what you said, so you're, if you're gonna.
That was more the cost, what the, the cost was of the ground lease.
Okay, but if, if we're talking about creating construction standards, that would be developed into the new ground lease that your new lawyer's gonna help you prepare, I would think.
I.
Because your current ground lease talks about, you know, stormwater. And, and how, you know, how the hanger's gonna be constructed.
Mm-hmm. So you're suggesting not handle number eleven yet until we have this attorney on board?
Right, and to, until you get the appraisal, till you find out, you know, where you are in the market, till you get your financial doc, you know, financial stuff segregated, so you can better know whether you're making money or not. Then, I mean, you can do everything, I, I'm ju- just stay away from, if you can, the construction and design standards. At this point, that's, that's all, but the other things, uh.
We're stepping all over your motion.
I'm so sorry, I'll stop.
No, don't stop, don't stop, we're getting there. We're getting there, we're.
May fourteenth at four forty P M. Put it on your.
We're making, we're making progress here. It's, it's slow and a bit ugly, but we're making progress.
Or sausage.
Oh, yes. So if we pulled number eleven from here and waited until after we get, uh, counsel on board, uh, that's specialized in this. Does that prohibit us from, I don't want to say, moving forward with this lease that, or this potential lease that's out there? Or does that, I mean, does that, does that prohibit us from at least addressing it? Bringing it before the board, approving it, not approving it, whatever?
I, I think some of the criticism has been that our documents are not comprehensive, they conflict with each other. They don't all say the same thing. So I would say you would not want to get into another thirty-year lease with somebody. Until you all have a comprehensive policy on how you're gonna handle ground leases. Uh, it's hugely important, and so long-lasting, a thirty-year lease, absolutely.
It is, it is, but we've, we've done this already. And I believe the individual that's waiting for this, or individuals that are waiting for this board to make a decision on it. Began down this road. I don't want to say on the advice, but after being in con- conversation with county staff about this, uh, and I, I just. I, I, I would like to see us at least be able to address that. If this board approves it, fine, if the board, you know, denies it, fine with that too. But I think we at least need to get them a decision at this point.
Commissioner Baze?
I hear what you're saying, but here is my angst with that, and that's exactly the reason I printed out that stuff and handed it to you today. What is failed is we should not be taking possession of a built hanger. When it's done on day one. We should be taking possession of it at the end of the thirty years. By us taking possession of that hanger, we're now responsible for the insurance of it. So we're absorbing that cost. That should be, the person that built the hanger, they should be paying that insurance on every year, and it's not reflective in our ground leases.
Okay.
So that's my issue with this. I think we're all over the board, we're doing things that we, we don't have any idea what we're doing, and we're hodgepodge. And we need to fit, this is what I'm saying, we need to go through this, everything needs to be consistent, we, in line, and we need to know what we're doing and what it's costing us. That's why I think this is so.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with that.
Madam Chair.
So how about one, three, four, and attorney?
Aviation attorney.
Commissioner Schleba.
I was a big proponent of not doing any leases out at Inverness until we had this study, which was rushed through. And it clearly says in the observations that the current lease is significantly undervalued. The leases for the terminal hanger, the, um, other hangars, the apron, the fuel farm, blah, blah, blah. Same with Crystal River. So if you're asking, are we gonna go ahead and approve a lease?
No, that's not what I, no, what the ask was, I'm sorry, I know I interrupted you, but what I was asking is not whether or not we're going to approve it, but are we going to address it? Approve it, deny it, whatever, but we've, we've had somebody that was moving forward after conversations with staff and came to a standstill. Waiting on this study to be done, and now, uh, I'm not opposing the direction we're going, but now the direction we're going, it's gonna, we're gonna be a year? Year and a half before we'll ever get to the point that we have the completed documents saying, okay, now we can move forward with this. Um, with this hanger that staff suggested to you, we're ready to move forward on, you know, a year ago.
Okay, I'm gonna take the floor back. I don't think it'll be a year and a half, because once we get this, if this motion passes and we get the appraisal, then we're gonna know, okay, if you want to build that hanger. And it works into the plan, it's gonna be this much money.
But we, well, we still need to give the aviation attorney, um, an opportunity to redo our leases though. But hopefully that could happen in a lot sooner than a year and a half. One, why not? You, you.
I mean, it's government.
Are you comfortable with one, three, four, and aviation attorney, since it's your motion?
Yeah, I think we ba- I'd like to see us kind of move through, forward with pretty much everything with, with the exception of leases, because I think you've got to have an attorney to cobble this all together.
So what's the motion?
Are you amending your motion? You need to amend it for the aviation attorney anyway, or do another motion, one or the other.
So, Mr. Consultant?
Yes, ma'am.
Would it be, would it be? At your recommendation that we would pretty much move forward with everything, it, with the exception of leases? Until we have this information back and get an attorney that can go look through all the leases, or is some of the policy-guiding documents, are we gonna need the attorney for that as well?
Rules and regulations, you probably, you might, but it would pair into your current L D C or county ordinances, it's not necessarily be something out of the bounds of the county. Standard language, it's operations on the airport specific to it, right? So minimum standards, that's a, it's a different one, that's commercial operations. Based on the, the leases that you're looking at, it doesn't look to be, you know, no one's gonna be providing a service, a commercial service at the airport. So that's something that could, will take some time to develop, but overall, um, to answer your question. Those documents will impact leases, and so the quicker you get started on them, the quicker you'll have a standard template and a benchmark to continue with your leases and have the aviation attorney review them.
So that I'm clear of what we're looking at as a board, are we looking at the agenda item E fifteen, or are we looking at the backup on the recommended action plan?
We're on E fifteen.
I'm looking at the action plan.
I'm looking at the agenda.
I would say page eight fifty-eight and eight fifty-nine and eight sixty.
That's what I'm looking at. Not really. They might be, but. I'm gonna make a motion, I'm gonna rescind my first motion, I'm gonna make a motion that we move forward with the recommended action plan of everything with the exception of leases. And add, um.
She rescinded hers, are you rescinding yours?
Apparently.
That we move forward with the recommended action plan with, um, all of it with the exception of anything to do with leases. And add, um. Getting FAA legal counsel.
Can we, all of us look at this and pull the, pull the numbers that we're pulling? So seven is one of them?
Five.
And does the word leases include the FBO leases?
Yes.
Which is seven, that's what I pulled. Well, there's more than one that has to do with leases.
So pull five and seven?
Um, I would pull.
Oh, there's six too, it says enhance financial performance, airport lease agreement that follows county's policy.
And two. Eleven. Eleven is the design we talked about.
Now, two, two and eight don't have anything to do with leases.
I know, but it's financial.
I'd want financial.
You want it?
Yeah.
Oh.
Nine. So pulling five, six, seven, and nine. Is there anything else?
That's all I see.
Well, the two and, two and eight were adding new positions, correct?
Yes.
And so we're voting on that today?
Yes, apparently, according to the motion maker.
Well, isn't Todd really like the director anyway, or not?
He's, no.
What is he?
General ma- manager.
Well, what do you call the person that's supposed to be at the airport just for operations every day?
Operations.
I go by many titles, you call them an airport director. I mean, the majority of airports around you, the airport, person running the airport's at the airport, and they're called.
That's all I want, I don't want to change, I don't want to add personnel, I just want that person to have a spot at the airports.
Well, eight is adding personnel. Because it says adding.
All right, so pull two and eight, and Mr. Administrator, you figure that part out. Since they're your staff.
So this would be a motion to approve one, three, four. Ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, is that correct?
Yes.
Plus the approval to seek an aviation attorney?
Yes. You have all that?
Am I missing anything?
Let me verify this, I have one, three, four, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, was fifteen in there?
Yes.
Okay, fifteen, sixteen.
Ten through, ten through twenty, basically.
Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, as well as hiring an outside aviation counsel.
Yes.
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Baze, a second by Commissioner Schleba. And I am gonna do open to the public. And by the way, I don't think Ruthie or Commissioner Schleba said that you rushed this. I think she's saying that we rushed you on your presentation and we apologize.
Yes, I'm sorry we rushed you.
We have to come back. I love the drive up here from Tampa, it's great.
That suncoast is something, isn't it?
I actually brought my family up here last week, my father-in-law came in from Louisiana, took the kids kayaking in Kings Bay, so. Awesome, so you have experienced some of our charms.
Sure have.
Sorry about the sausage making. All right, Mr. Rudemiller. Skater Bob.
Just take three minutes. Bob Rudenord, Floral City. As an electrical engineer, I've also worked on airports, uh, they're very complex. And, uh, number eleven refers to, uh, standards, engineering standards. I highly recommend that you. Get an elec- a, a, a design engineer familiar with airport engineering, it's, and they're expensive, so there is a cost expense in number eleven. Just heavy rains in Florida take special, um, consideration. in runway design because the water has to be eliminated. If a plane lands at a high speed and there's too much water on the runway, you lose control of the aircraft. That in itself is a safety issue. It goes down to engineering. So I agree with Denise Diamond and what she made about construction as well. I highly recommend you take a hard look at the costs of number eleven.
I have also personally seen when I worked at the Austin Airport, an FBO, a hangar door doing a frisbee down the ramp. That's scary. Who's next?
Hi, Hi Kukalimbaq again, Aviation Advisory Board. I, I think, I think you're, you're very much on the right track. You've, you've taken all my thunder by pulling all the ones that the AAB was going to have issue with. And, but in, in general, yes, move forward with all of the marketing things, all of the things that have to do with how can we get, bring more money into the county. The one thing that I would suggest is look at number seventeen because that has to do with leases as well. And if we're pulling the pieces out that have to do with what are our leases going to say, what are they going to do, what are they gonna reflect? Technically, that's, that's part of lease agreement as well, so you may wanna consider pulling that. Outside of that, I think, I think you're exactly on the right track. I, I agree that it was unfortunate we didn't have enough time today to, to get through everything that, that Mr. Elsie and Dr. Byers had to say for the, with respect to the survey. But if you wanna take the time to do that again at a future workshop, that'd be great. We'd be happy to come and, and, and talk then. In the meantime, this motion as it is, maybe consider taking out number seventeen, I think is the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alana McCarty, Humus Assa. Generally, when I approach you guys, I try to be really positive when I come up because I think everybody here does a really good job, and I know how hard each one of you work on individual projects because I see you in the community, I talk to most of you on a regular basis about different things that are happening between Septic to Seward Airport projects, all the things. And so I know that you work really hard. We've been waiting eight months to get this on the books, to be able to have this workshop. It was done very poorly today. There was a lot of information in this study that was never brought out. You didn't have an opportunity to do, ask any questions basically at the end of it. And a lot of people, including a consultant, including people with AAB, industry people, we spent a lot of our personal time to get ready for this. And so to see how it was handled and to see the non-action that's coming out of that right now. But then to just also feel that our time was wasted to get to where we are right now and having to reschedule this, I think this workshop and the, this being on the agenda was rescheduled four times. I took off, I know, two separate times for my own contracts that I had to come back to try to be here for this workshop and for the meeting. And I do feel like that it's disappointing, so, and out of all the things I've ever come up here to say, that's hard for me to say to anybody there. But the action portion of this, we have to get rolling on it. You guys see the bulldozers out there right now at the airport, you see the people lining up, like, we are already so far behind, all of these things, and to just keep getting it pushed on to, we'll do another workshop, we'll do another agenda item, we'll do this, like, it's tiring. It really is, because the people are already out there pushing dirt. I mean, we're already doing all that, all these items that are on here are just supporting all the stuff that you're already allowing to happen and all the funding that we've already worked really hard to get, so, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Andy Chan, Wright Rudder Aviation. Again, Commissioners, thank you for your time and effort you've put into this. A couple of points. Number one, very much in support of pursuing grants. Historically, the county did not pursue many aviation grants. And in fact, myself and my organization wrote approximately ten different grants on behalf of the county and received approval from the board to submit on that behalf of the county. So it's great if the county takes over that because there is frankly millions and millions of dollars on the table that we are leaving behind because we don't have the grant writers that could go directly towards improving the airport and the community. I ran out of time earlier, it was a short, short time that we had, of course, but to continue the discussion, I did appreciate the consultants, however, with respect to their financial projections, they were off by more than fifty percent. And again, happy to meet with each and every one of you. Fifty percent of the hangars are not on the Inverness Airport that were in the presentation are privately owned by individuals, not by the county and not by Wright Rudder Aviation. And so those projected rents that they put in the forecast are not collected by anyone, they're imaginative and made up. So just wanted to point that out. Another thing is, they compared to some of the local airports, but it wasn't an apples-to-apples comparison because airports such as Ocala and Leesburg charge additional fees beyond their fuel expenses. For example, if you just stop your airplane at the Ocala Airport, it's a twenty-dollar charge. Both Crystal River and Inverness Airport do not charge those fees because we welcome visitors and individuals to the county. And so we forego that revenue in order to have good relationships with our, with our customers. Just another point, the seventeen cents per square foot was not from eight years ago. It was actually from about two or three years ago when there was a study done and approved by this, by the BOCC at that point in time to go forward with the seventeen cents per square foot, which two hangars were built. Dr. Montgomery and Steve Lamb were able to build the hangars. And the outstanding leases were told that they could move forward under that same percentage as well, or same price per square foot. Another point that was brought up is about the insurance requirements for liability. One million is standard in the flight training industry, and that was a little bit of the difficulty that we had was raising it to three million is three times the industry standard. And no underwriter would insure the three million dollars because it is not standard. So that was very difficult to come by, and it cost us an additional twenty to forty thousand dollars each year because of that additional requirement on top of the, on top of the one million. Finally, one thing that is of importance that he noted was that there's a lot of trees at the Inverness Airport and we're, enjoy a five-thousand-foot-long runway, which Crystal River, thank goodness, is gonna get soon. But we're gonna lose that if, it's gonna go down to four thousand feet or, or less if those obstacles are not taken care of. So that's another important thing to consider. Thank you so much, have a great day.
Thank you.
James Sim from Crystal River Group and Quest Avionics, based on Crystal River Airport. Commissioners, I, I was a little disappointed with, with today's presentation, as Andy pointed out, some data was not accurately reflected. And one important component was missing on the, on the item is addressed the revenues, the airport, the hangars, this can generate, but it did not address the deteriorated business environment we are facing, especially after the COVID. Especially after that, and the supply chain, and the whole nine yards of the neighbor cost, the payroll cost, the insurance, and the, the cool formula was being implemented in Crystal River Airport was implemented for a reason. The reason is, the business had ups and downs. If the business run up, everybody's happy, county make money, private sector make money. And the cost was shielded by different stakeholders. But when we have a lease with the county, when business was bad, when we don't have enough business, and town was forced to go bankrupt if there's no cool formula at that time. That was a sample of private-public partnership to rescue a small business being so important to this community while the business condition is bad. Now, I'm in that bad business time, I've been operating on that airport, I told you that town didn't tell me that's not a nonprofit organization, that's a no-profit organization. I, over the several years, I lost a lot of money. The only way I can survive on this is because I were another head as architect. I've been practicing, practicing running for both jobs. So I wanna mention that your vote today will have an impact on the business. And it will have a lasting impact on what the business can survive or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else over there? That is why we polled all the leases, I believe, is I remember Dad saying he was one week away from having to close the doors if they, because not only did nine eleven close the airport for two weeks, but then all of a sudden they closed an additional two weeks, like, three weeks later because we were within ten miles of a nuclear power plant. And that darn near put them out of business a little over twenty years ago. So the cool formula is definitely a good public-private partnership. So you know I'll defend both FBOs in that manner. But I think we pulled, did we not pull all the lease stuff? So we're not voting on that today. So we need more information on that part, but we need to move forward with as much as we can. This is a rapidly growing county with a heck of a lot of challenges, and it's a lot. Ms. McCarty, your criticism is well-founded, and I apologize. I'm the chair, I probably should have been a little more activist with staff to make sure that this went forward in a better manner, so I will take the heat for that. Madam Attorney?
Were, were you all gonna consider seventeen?
No.
Okay.
Okay. No more, so we're gonna close open to the public, pardon? Yes?
One thing I wanted to confirm before you voted. You had briefly spoken about a consensus on having another public workshop, but I didn't hear everybody agree to that, so I just wanted to see if you wanted that in the record.
I don't think so at this time. If we're voting for this many, we can swallow this part of the elephant.
Okay.
And it's, we're putting a lot of things in motion on this, and I think the rest of it's gonna come back hopefully fairly soon for government.
Thank you. She asked about a workshop?
Yeah.
If it's okay with a consultant, I'll, I'll go to Tampa and we can meet and go through some of my concerns. Okay. Never mind.
And if all of us want time with you, then it would be more cost-effective for you to come up, time-efficient. So, do you have an opinion on that, Commissioner Baze? Do you not need any more time with them? Okay. Commissioner Finnegan?
If, if the majority want a workshop, I'll be happy to, and yeah, I would like to, oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to be open to contact him. I don't have his information, but I'm sure I can get it. Like to ask questions in the future.
I think that we just need to be mindful of everyone's time. Commissioner Kennard?
It sounds like there's still a lot more questions here. You know, initially, I started off with tabling this because it was getting very messy. I don't know that it's cleaned up at all, but if we're, you know, if we wanna schedule another workshop or even a special meeting and walk through the items one at a time with our consultant here, where we can vote on things. I'd be up for either one. I don't, I don't think it makes sense for each one of us to be driving down to Tampa to go and talk to him individually because quite frankly, we should be operating as a board, and you know, any one of the other four commissioners might have a question that we go, I hadn't thought about that, I hadn't considered that.
Okay, I'm good with having another workshop at some point, but at least we are, we're voting right now on most of them, at least. So it's gonna get it down to a little more bite-sized. Everybody good with that? We have any further board discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
E sixteen.
Motion to approve E sixteen.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E seventeen, A and B.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Baze, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, is there any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E eighteen.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Baze, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve E nineteen, A, and move it to June fifth.
June fifth?
The third, the room is not available, I believe?
Yeah, third and fourth was not available.
Check my calendar. I can do that.
I have a Moffett appointment, June fifth, but I'll, I'll try to, I've had it.
Are those fairly easily moved?
I've had it for two months on the calendar, so I, I think it's gonna be very difficult. But.
And we can't do the sixth?
I could go, I could come late, I could be late.
Is your appointment in the afternoon? Of course it is. Can we start early? I don't know.
Does it make sense to cancel a meeting?
How do we have a meeting and then less than a week later we have another meeting? How's that work for backup information? I.
I don't know yet. You're gonna find out, you're gonna find out.
That's fair. Well.
Is there anything super weighty on the twenty-eighth? That we're gonna miss our colleague?
Yeah, I'd have to talk with, you know, staff on that, I don't know the, where we're at on the, we, the process continues, you know. Agendas are going through the system and things, I don't have a copy of what that looks like right now.
Can you combine both of them to the June fifth? Like, combine the eleventh and the twenty-eighth and make it?
Well, the June fifth.
The June fifth is a problem for Commissioner Schleba.
Well, I know, and she's saying the afternoon, I'm thinking it's morning, but our meetings tend to, unless your appointment's way late in the afternoon.
It's at one.
You know what, I would say just keep it on the twenty-eighth, I just, I just won't be able to, uh, to make that one.
And anything serious, you know, that's not time-sensitive, just.
Put anything on the animal shelter on the twenty-eighth, please, starting now.
Okay.
So I'll rescind my motion.
So. So. I'll make a motion on E nineteen B to keep the May twenty-eighth board meeting.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Schleba?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kennard. We don't need a public on that. Any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Get that back on the calendar.
We'll miss you and we expect fish when you get back.
There's gonna be no fish.
All right, Mr. Howard? Or Veronica, someone?
Veronica, come forward really quickly. I know we gotta, had a lot of time here today, but I wanna really quickly show you the progress of the dashboards. It's coming around, coming along very nicely. We can just look real quickly. There's actually a question that was raised earlier today, and it's actually was on, up on the dashboard, just to be able to show we have some real, real time.
To make sure I have the correct screen open here. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I will try to make this as brief as possible, but this is going to be an overview of your outstanding commission items list as well as some additional information about the dashboards that we have for your strategic planning. So Mr. Howard wanted me to focus here on this project dashboard's pop-up button down here in the bottom right-hand corner. This was discussed at the last meeting but wasn't on screen. So this button right here will take you to a project dashboard that links out to all of our different types of projects, including your outstanding commission items list.
Attractively done.
Thank you. We have tried to create some additional anchor points on these pages to make them less overwhelming with all the additional content that's available through the widgets, so at each, at the beginning of each page, we have what is akin to a table of contents up here. So once you find the project that you are looking for, whether it be through that project dashboard's pop-up or the search button on the website, you'll get to the page that you'd like to see, and then the project you want more information about, you can just go ahead and click. So for the purposes of this presentation, I'm gonna click on Impact Fee Study. And we'll see that we're about sixteen percent towards getting that study. and we'll see that we're about sixteen percent towards getting that study conducted and completed and presented to the board. So we have that overall roll-up of the project progress. We also have the list widgets here. These were discussed at the previous meeting as well, they do have a scroll bar here on the right side so that there can be additional information, if there is no scroll bar, that means that all of the information for that item is presented in the widget. So currently, we are reviewing and approving the solicitation scope within purchasing for the impact fee study, and it looks like based on the timeline that we've created internally, we will be presenting an updated fee schedule to you all in March of two thousand and twenty-five. So that's just an example of one of the many projects that we're tracking for you on this page. And in the interest of time, I'm not gonna get into a one-by-one update, but I did have a request for a vote for a few items on this list that were discussed last time. I'm gonna go back up to the top. At our previous meeting, we had discussed the CRSAA grant funding, which was aviation-specific funding through the CARES Grant Program during COVID. Twenty-three thousand was allotted to the Crystal River Airport, and thirteen thousand was allotted to the Inverness Airport. All of that funding has been expended, but there was discussion at the previous meeting about the FBO wish lists and how those integrated with this item, so I just wanted to give you guys that information. We had twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars of eligible expenditures for the Crystal River Airport, and twenty-three thousand of those dollars were reimbursed by the CRSAA program. Items that were completed on the FBO wishlist that we received were the Fuel Farm Security Camera, completed in April two thousand and twenty-three. We also had additional items that were requested, including transferring hangar leases, that was not a funding request. Canopy over FBO windows was deferred due to the cost of the walkway cover. The walkway cover is pending a scope of work from Daley and Zilch, so that is in progress. And then a new restroom in the front yard, the cost exceeded the available funding for the CRSAA program. So those items are still on record, we do still have the information that was submitted, and some of them are in progress, some of them have been tabled due to funding. It's the same situation with the Inverness Airport, we had thirteen thousand dollars and six cents of eligible expenditures, and all but six cents were reimbursed by the CRSAA. For the FBO requests for the Inverness Airport, most of those were not completed, most of those exceeded the available funding requests or were not a funding request, but instead fell into the other projects that are currently happening at the airports or contingent on the IAVP construction. So if that pleases the board, I would ask that you vote to remove these two items, as they will not be able to be tracked further, or remove the CRSAA grant funding and add any additional items you're interested in tracking.
Go ahead, Commissioner Bays.
So you, you're saying we did spend thirteen thousand at the airport, on what?
I can provide you with the backup that I received from the Management and Budget Office. For the Crystal River Airport, it looks like it was equipment maintenance and generator relocation. And for the Inverness Airport, lawn service, utilities, alarm repair, and equipment maintenance. And I believe Ms. Doran gave some additional context at the last meeting about how that money needed to be spent and how those other expenditures were accounted for.
I believe the Chrisa funds were from COVID, were they not?
Correct.
Yeah.
I'm, why lawn service? I mean, don't we have a lawn, don't we have maintenance of the lawn anyway, so?
Unfortunately, this is not my area of expertise.
Okay.
Again, I mean, this ship has sailed, but one-time money should be used for one-time things, not ongoing maintenance. Yes?
Veronica, on, on your widgets, the nine o'clock workshop, is that on our site? This is the first page of the nine o'clock workshop?
That information will be on the.
Clerk's side.
The clerk's side, correct, yes.
So when, when it was brought up that it wasn't all on there, it's not from this side? Okay.
That would be the civic clerk issue, which we will address in a moment as well.
Somewhere in all of our, to the point of taking these off, that, that was gonna go in the archives, correct? So it's still accessible, but it's not front and center?
So this information is all within Achieve It, so all I would be doing is taking off the widgets that present them on, on the website, and I think to draw a parallel with the way that this was previously done, the outstanding commission items list, you voted to add items, you voted to remove items, and so in the spirit of that, I would not like to remove anything from this page without your vote.
Okay, and, but it's, it's still, it's still in Achieve It, so we could find it, right? Can the public find it?
Absolutely, I can provide it to the public, we can pull reports from Achieve It.
Okay, cool. I'm good with that, are y'all?
To add one additional item, Inverness Villages Four is also an item that will not be making any additional progress based on our current direction, so if you'd like to include that in your motion. Or not.
We need a motion on this, then someone make a motion to remove Chrisa and.
I'll make a motion with Chrisa and IB four.
Second.
Chair, was that also FBO wishlist? Wasn't there three things that you wanted?
The FBO wishlist and Chrisa are, are one item.
Okay, so it's only the Chrisa and the.
IB four.
IB four.
Okay, that was a motion by Commissioner Bays, who is it? Kennard?
Me.
Commissioner Kennard, it's the second. Any public comment?
Being embarrassed, she just springs, okay, I watched her demonstrate this, 'cause I'm trying to learn how to do this. And she kept reading things, they weren't on the screen. I'm trying to figure out, where is she getting all this information, she's reading this, 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 this? And then she's saying completed, and I'm saying, where are you getting that information? If I'm supposed to be able to find that as a citizen? Okay, I don't know what you're watching on your screen when she was doing that, but it had like the thirty, it had the twenty-three mil, you know, the twenty-three thousand, and it had the thirteen, and she's saying that this was done, this was done. There was nothing on my screen saying that what was done for the twenty-three thousand, or what was done for the thirteen. She just read off a whole bunch of things that was supposedly done. Where am I as a citizen, or somebody going on the, the website, gonna be able to find that? Because it was not on the screen I watched.
Thank you. Board, any comments? I'll make one comment, when it comes to the FBO wishlist, as we're doing all the FBO, looking at what we're doing for facilities on both, we do need to keep that list somewhere, because that's part of us upgrading those facilities, especially Crystal River, since it's so much older. And I came in after hours this weekend, and yes, an outdoor bathroom would be very nice for our, for pilots that are coming in after hours. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. G one. Thank you, Veronica.
Requesting the board confirmation of Steve Baham, as the Economic Development Director, effective, it's gonna, this was said May fourteen, to be May the twenty-eighth, he's actually been in our county multiple times, actually vacations here, we're very fortunate to get him, he has over eighteen years of experience in economic development, business development, financial management, has a master's degree, and also Bachelor of Science in Finance, also has two certifications in economic development, and I think he'll be the right fit for Citrus, so ask for your support to confirm this today, please.
Motion approved, G one.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Finnegan, is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion?
Chair?
Yes?
Did he say that that was going to be effective May twenty-eighth?
Correct.
So we want to specifically say that, because the motion was.
Commissioner Kennard?
Yes, I'll amend my motion to May twenty-eighth.
Commissioner Finnegan?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for catching that. Any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. G two.
I can take this real quickly, this is just approval for a part-time operator two position, this would be enterprise money.
Okay.
Motion to approve, G two.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Kennard, is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion approved, G three.
Second.
A and B. Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Bays, is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion?
I just wanna point out, because I asked Mr. Howard about this, in case anyone mentions that later, this position should pay for itself, and the grants that are helping members of our community, because I wanted to make sure we weren't just randomly adding to the budget, and this will not only improve customer service to the people that have put us here to make these decisions for them, but also take care of the position. It'll bring back money to the county, so I think that's important to say out loud, so that the community understands that.
Excellent. Any further board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Veronica?
Good afternoon again, Veronica Campshaw, our Special Projects Manager. I am here to give you information about the agenda software update that the Board of County Commissioners and the clerk is undertaking. As you know, we currently use Civic Clerk as our vendor for our Agenda Media and Minutes modules, which kind of are the entire engine behind what makes this whole meeting happen, as well as our advisory meetings, and allows our public residents to research documents that are available online. It's come to our attention that the current vendor is not able to give us the level of service that we are clearly needing here in Citrus County, and therefore, a new agenda software procurement process has been initiated. So we just wanted to make you aware that we will be undertaking that process with the clerk's staff as a partnership, and coming back to you with more information as we build the timeline for that project.
Any questions? All right. Cheryl?
Advisory Board announcements, nominations, and appointments. I one Beverly Hills Advisory Council, accept resignation with regret and announce vacancy, accept with regret the resignation of Donald Slow from Beverly Hills Advisory Council, effective April seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. The Beverly Hills Advisory Council requests that the BOCC announce that a regular member position is available and applications will be received in the County Administrator's Office. The current membership term expires January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you. Okay, committee reports, Commissioner Kennard?
Ms., Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I just wanna say thank you to Donald Slow and for his time and volunteering for this board, and I hope that him and his wife are faring better. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schleba?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Commissioner Bays?
Nothing, no.
Okay, well, I'm gonna make up for all of you, I'm sorry, but I've got three reports, I'll be quick. Are you seriously walking out on me?
I, I make a motion, she tabled this till May twenty-eighth.
This is gonna be quick, I'm, I'm gonna be quick.
I believe it.
Buckle up. Medical Examiner Board, otherwise I like to call it the Dead People Board, we are gonna have complete drawings ready to bid Jan, January, February of twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-five. We failed at the legislative request, Ocala is floating the bond for all six counties. They put in a legislative request for this last session for two-point-eight million. All five other counties gave letters of support, it failed. So we are considering what to do, and I believe the Ocala legislative person is going to reach out to our, each individual county's legislative person, which would be James Toy on this end, who would work with Gene. For CF update, we approved grants for United Way, HPH Hospice, Caroline's Agape Project, CASA, Jesse's Place, Key Training Center, Blessings, Community Food Bank, and Nature Coast Ministries. The reason I went through this is there's one huge request that is totally not within our ability to fund, and that was from the YMCA, for a YMCA and childcare center at Citrus Memorial. They, as you all know, we were able to fund a state-of-the-art Y just on community support. It launched debt-free. We're trying to do the same thing, I said on that board, we're trying to do the same thing in Inverness. The belief from the folks that are driving that on the YMCA board is that we need basically four million to get the pot rolling to start going out for community, so anyone with any influence on the hospital foundation board would be appreciated if you could work on that. And then one last thing, TDC. Citrus County Partners in Tourism inaugural event will take place tomorrow morning at the Monkey Bar. I still have PTSD when we talk about monkeys, but it is from eight-thirty AM to ten AM tomorrow morning. A new landing page was created for partners to access benefits and resources and stay involved. New Florida Trails video, this was awesome. Florida Trails video in partnership with Visit Florida launched featuring Inverness, which can be viewed on Visit Florida's YouTube channel, fantastic video. Showcased a lot of our local small businesses, such as Sidebar and Cattle Dog. Grants, we had, at the last one, we had five of the seven presented, two were tabled. Those five were approved, ranged from marketing collateral to festival marketing support. And that's all I have. Sorry, but I took up all y'all's time.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
So you're a member of the community foundation? Which is what you're talking about?
For CF, yes.
That was the money that came out of the, the sale of the hospital?
Yes.
So when are your grants, I was told that your grant applications are now closed.
Yes.
How many times a year are they open?
We are, we're trying to move to one, and then we would do, if we don't expend all of the grant money, 'cause we're, we're bound by bylaws which are overseen by the hospital board, and so we can only use a percentage of what our fund makes, that's the only thing we can give, so it ranges wildly from mid-six figures down to mid-five figures. So we just have a lot of strictures on that.
Well, I, I mean, I'm, I am gonna put this out there, because I do have a problem with it. That hospital was sold, and the monies were put aside, and for health and the benefit of our community, considering that we have a high addiction and mental health problem, I have, I, I'm frustrated, number one, that that board doesn't seem to pass out money. I mean, you're building capital, you're, you're, you're keeping all your principal, and you're only expending so many dollars, and it's really not getting back to the people. It was their money, their taxes, taking off the tax, we're putting back on the tax rolls. And I think that money needs to get back out, and I know that, and I'm saying this because I've heard you bring up many times about this homeless shelter, and I guess I'm gonna go on the record and I'm gonna say this out loud. We got a lot of i's to dot and a lot of t's to cross before we go down that road. I'm very concerned about that, 'cause I don't think that we've utilized all the tools in our toolbox before we start thinking about doing something like that. Club Recovery has been in this county for many years, they are a completely no-paid staff. They do great work, they hold forty-some-odd meetings a week. And I, they're trying to expand and do more, they're working with our jail, and they're needing funding, and they came and they're, that's closed down. And, and they're trying to get more help out to these people, and I think before we start looking at homeless shelters, we need to make sure that we're utilizing everything that we can do. We need to be holding every resource in this county accountable to make sure that we're, that these people are getting the preventative services that they need upfront before we start going down the road of putting shelters in, so I hope that you'll take that back to your board. I hope that they will start to look at putting more money, whether we have a three-quarter house, a halfway house, because I'll tell you, talking to the psychologist out at the jail, people go in with addiction problems, and they don't wanna be hooked on drugs, but when they get in there, they're forced into detox. And they like the structure. But then when they come out of jail, there is no structure, they don't have family support, or they don't have jobs to go to, they don't have a number of things, and then they end up right back in the same place. And my concern with the homeless is they end up homeless, they're, the average stay is four months, the average stay for incarceration is four months. So is this a cycle? I wanna know if, before we go down that road, what are the outcomes of these programs? Because I just don't want this to be, they circle from one homeless shelter to another, or they're incarcerated, or whatever the situation is, I really wanna know some details, and I, you, you keep bringing it up, and it may be a good thing, and I'm not telling you that it's not, but before we keep talking about it, I want details, lots of details.
Absolutely. But to your point.
I was up first.
Oh, so sorry.
But, but to your point.
Easy, we're gonna stay late for that.
This is, this is two separate issues, so. So homeless shelters, homeless shelters for another day. And yes, there'll be plenty of details. 4CF is bound by bylaws that are more or less at the behest of the hospital board. And that is supposed to be a fund that lives in perpetuity. That's why we only use income from the investments, that's it. So. Commissioner Kennard?
Yeah, just a point of clarification and I was going to add in what you just put in there. The hospital wasn't sold, it's a long-term lease. And that's, those are the funds that, that, that board, it's not the hospital board, it's, I forget what they.
Hospital Foundation Board?
That it, that, they send, they take that, you know, they've been recouping as much money as they could and they're still sitting on a fairly large sum of money. The rest of it has either gone out to CF to fund, help fund a nursing program out there. They send the rest of it over to 4CF. And I forget what the bylaws say there. You're allowed to spend 75% of the interest that, that comes off of the investment account, 75 or 80%, so there's, there's some percentage of that.
Yeah, and it's a very small percentage.
Oh, it's a small percentage. I thought it was the majority of the interest that you could spend up there.
I don't believe so. I don't keep those numbers in my head, so I'd have to confirm. I don't want to.
But it's only the interest that you, that, that, that board can spend and get it out to the community. Now, I'll go back to that, that foundation board. I have had some preliminary talks with them about moving a large sum of money that, that they're still sitting on into an interest-bearing account that would help to supplement the salary of a psychiatrist in the new mental health facility that, that we are teaming up with Hernando County and the state on because LifeStream is, is limited in what they can actually, what salary, they're capped at what they can pay a psychiatrist to be here full-time. And that cap is not going to get one here full-time. So if we can get another account, another source of revenue that would help to supplement that, ultimately, that would, that would fund it in perpetuity to have a full-time psychiatrist. They have not given the nod for that yet. I do, I do think that it will be well-received. But quite frankly, they want to see the facility coming out of the ground first, what the plan is, what's happening. And then my plan is to go to that board and make a presentation on them on exactly what it looks like, that we would need them to invest into an account and sit there and just push out interest to help get us a full-time psychiatrist here in the county.
Okay, thank you.
Little peek behind the curtain.
I was next.
Pardon?
I was next.
Okay, go right ahead.
I just want to address something that Commissioner Baze had said I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the Sanctuary Mission. In my personal time, I sit on that board. And just for some of those people coming out of jail, just for everyone's knowledge, I mean, if you are talking to people, they do take people out of jail too and it is a wonderful program that already exists and it is in Home SASSA. It's a nine-month program. They will keep them longer, but it's recovery from not just drugs, but any addiction. They also teach community, they have to deal with their own problems. They help them get ready for a job. They provide jobs on-site and then they go out for hire and they have jobs. They have a way that by the time the person leaves the program, they leave with a lot of money that they have earned and worked for. And then they don't just release them, they make sure that there's housing, a job and a support system so that they do not fall back. I mean, recidivism rates, I'm sure you are learning that and everything that you're doing with the mental health, they're high. So all that support, people still may go back, but they, they can go back to the program. I mean, with loving arms. So we, we have some really good opportunities for people in this community. I think that maybe everyone doesn't know about them, but because I do give my time and sit on this board, I really believe in that program, that, that is one out of Club Recovery, another one, a great program. So yeah, maybe we need to, I think the United Way has some things out there, but maybe, you know, some presentation could go and let people know what's out there too.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
I just want to say, because we can't discuss anything outside of these chambers, Alana McCarty and I were at the LGB building and a gentleman came up that was talking about Club Recovery. Is that the one in Home SASSA that you were talking about that you stood on the board?
Sanctuary Mission.
Sanctuary Mission. And he, he said, yeah, the director told us that, that you, you, the ladies on the board voted against getting them some property. And I'm like, I have no memory of that. So we went and did some research and actually it was not us. There wasn't actually a lady on the board at all and it had to do with some land. So if you could please mention that at your next, there's some misinformation. And he literally said three times, you ladies voted against giving us some land, so.
That might be whoever was saying that confusion because when I first met the director a couple of years ago, they, when I got the tour, they were talking about property and the county wanted to maintain the easement. And he didn't mention ladies, he didn't mention a rub. He just said the county didn't go for it and this is what we're doing instead.
Right. I, I, just, if you could just clarify at the meeting.
But it was years ago.
Yeah, well, I, I thought, oh gosh, I have no memory of that, but I thought it happened during the year when I was absent, maybe. But got, spoke to the staff and, and they're like, they looked it up for me. We, there wasn't even a lady on the board. And he, he said that the director or the, or the CEO of that Sanctuary Foundation is the one that told him that. So there's misinformation out there. I'm not saying the guy did it, I'm just saying if you could just clear that up.
I'll correct it and this, it could have even been the previous director.
Possibly.
I'll make sure it's corrected.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Moving on from committee reports, Commissioner Schlewa? Commissioner Kennard?
Nothing.
Commissioner Finnegan? Commissioner Baze?
Nothing.
Commissioner Davis, nothing. Commissioner, Commissioner Lynn, sorry.
Nothing, thank you.
Madam Attorney, no.
Nothing.
All right, open to the public. Anyone like to speak, it opened to the public.
Thank you.
This might be a red-letter day. All right, closing, open to the public before anybody changes their mind. Ms. Stanton, and by the way, I think since they're all room 100, you can just say same, you know, the same location.
Upcoming meetings, regular meeting, May 28, 2024 at 1:00 PM. Citrus County Courthouse, room 100, 110 North Popka Avenue, Inverness, Florida, 34450. Regular meeting, June 11, 2024 at 1:00 PM, Citrus County Courthouse. Regular meeting, July 9, 2024 at 1:00 PM, Citrus County Courthouse.
All right, we have no upcoming workshops and special meetings, no public hearings and we are adjourned. Hour and 11 minutes past your request, Jeff.